It's May 7, 2014. The time is 7:35 PM. This is a continuation of the area by SCB, the LLC.
Comprehensive permit on Massachusetts Chapter 40B. This is, I don't even know what number hearing this is in the number of hearings we've had, but I appreciate the applicants and those attending your participation for all these many weeks. There was an original plan that was submitted, that was withdrawn, and a new plan submitted. That new plan was subsequently withdrawn, and a modified plan was submitted. And this is now the first meeting where we will have a presentation by the applicant of the modified plan. Is that correct? So if you could just tell me who for the applicant is here and who would like to speak? Oh, thank you. And so for the record, this meeting is being recorded twice. Once by the zoning board for purposes of the open meeting statute, and a second time by the gentleman in the back for purposes of the Hingham public television viewing audience. And is there a microphone that needs to be used for purposes of the ...
That one is wireless, so if you want to sit in your seats, you can just unplug it and then use that forever.
Terrific. So it'd be helpful if you could use that mic, but you can place yourself wherever you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is Jeff Bangler from the firm SCB, representing the applicant. With me tonight is our architect Jim Veleco from the firm of Veleco Grizzato, Grizzato Veleco, Peter Freeman, our legal counsel from the Freeman Law Group, and William Buckley, our civil engineer from Bay Colony Group, and this handsome gentleman over here is my father, who's also from SCB, part of the applicant. Just to pick up on what you said, Mr. Chairman, we are here tonight to talk about our modified plan, but I would suggest that our plan is not hugely different from the previous plan that we talked about for so many months. The density has been reduced from 18 to 16 units. The site plan's been modified a little bit. We've endeavored to make some additional changes. On that note, we submitted a revised site plan yesterday, and I don't want particularly the board worried about iterations and all sorts. The site plan is basically the same plan as what we submitted three weeks ago. The only differences are there's no obstruction at the cul-de-sac or the back of the sidewalk. There's a stop line and stop sign set eight feet off the curb line at Main Street, and there's a change in curb materials where adjacent to the sidewalk. Otherwise, the plan is the same. We made those changes in response to the peer review analysis that was done by the town's peer review traffic engineer since we submitted those plans three weeks ago. He's here tonight. I certainly don't want to speak for him, but I believe all of the concerns and issues he has raised, not only with the most recent letter, but the letter preceding that, we've endeavored to reflect in our site plan. And that is the reason why a new iteration was issued. So with that said, despite us having been through many meetings and however long it's taken, the board has really never had the benefit of a presentation from our architect. So we thought it would be valuable to have Jim present tonight to talk about the revised site plan and the units and the context and answer any questions, obviously, because we think it's a good time to do that. And then after that, we really don't have anything else to present, so we're happy to go wherever the board wants us to at that point in time, so.
Before you turn the mic over, can you just review with us how many units total? How many affordable units?
Yep.
Any other key statistics?
Our original program was 20 units. We're now at 16 units total. And our original plan was four affordable units, and we're still at four affordable units. So the number of affordable units has not changed. The target population for those affordable units has changed in that the units will be priced for households earning up to 80% of area median income, which is more consistent with all of the other 40Bs that have been permitted in the town as opposed to our original proposal, which was targeted to households earning up to 50% of area median income. So that obviously is the most significant, the density reduction. The character and nature of the units is very similar to what the original presentation was. We have some more single-family units, less duplexes, but the nature of the units is more or less the same. The roadway or our internal driveway, however you refer to it, is more or less the same as it was. We've modified the grading a little bit in response to Mr. Dirk's requests, but the site itself is not materially changed from our 18-unit plan. We've enhanced it, we think, and made some modifications in response to comments that we've heard, but really, obviously, the critical difference is we're now at 16 units as opposed to originally 20, then 18, now 16. And the number of bedrooms is slightly reduced as well. We now have closing 16 three-bedroom units for a total of 48 bedrooms.
And what, how many bedrooms originally did you ...
I believe it was 54.
Got it.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions, obviously, along the way. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, and he'll take it from there.
Is it okay if I sit up here, or is it going to be difficult for you to be ...
Don't worry.
I'm happy to go on the other side.
Don't worry about me.
Okay, I'm not going to worry about that. So my name is Jim Veleco. I'm a principal of Grizzato Veleco Architects. Our firm was founded 37 years ago in Marblehead. 95% of our work is residential developments all over New England, from some very large single-family oceanfront homes to little developments like this and some not-so-little in Belmont and Concord and Southbury and Canton, Reading, and hopefully in Hingham. It is what we do. And what we do is try to design buildings and units that blend into the neighborhood. And Main Street is a wonderful neighborhood to blend into. We had done some working house some years ago, drove up and down Main Street for a decade, and took some photographs. And these photographs have been the essence of our design from day one up. Is that a fair compromise for everyone?
If you could move this a little more. If you could turn it that way, but move it a little more this way.
There's a fine line in there, isn't there?
That's good.
Are you happy with that?
Yeah. And if anyone out there would like to move their seats to better view, anything, please feel free.
So the general theme that we, we're not trying to reproduce any homes that are on Main Street. We're just trying to get the visual clues, the massing, the roof pitch, the materials. And one consistent theme on the houses that catch my eye are that they are essentially one story and then a roof. Of course, within that roof, there may be dormers, and in some cases, it's a story and a half, but it's hardly ever two stories straight up and then a roof. So it is this sort of composition, these window proportions, shutters, clavards, heavy trim on the street is what we're trying to capture. Just some of the aerial satellite views down Main Street give you that context. I wanted to say that before we talked about the site plan, and then we'll go back to look at the designs, but it's hard to appreciate what these little rectangles represent if you don't know what we're trying to achieve. So Main Street is here. There's about 240 feet of frontage. The site, the upland part of the site stretches back around 750 feet. There are over four acres of upland, even though there's another eight acres of conservation land and wetlands behind that. And so doing 16 units on a little bit over four acres, less than four units to the acre, around 10,000 square feet for every unit is a reasonable density, one that we're just finishing in Belmont. It's been very, very successful, both the town and the historic commission and the buyers. It is a density that allows some breathing room. And this sort of profile of a building with the master bedroom on the first floor and only two bedrooms and a loft on the second floor is a very pleasant form, I think. So we have around a 600-foot-long drive ending in a cul-de-sac that the fire marshal has reviewed for its radius and turn. It is gently curving. It's not straight, but then again, it's not so meandering that it's dangerous. So I think that it's a pleasant curve, and that as you drive down that, the facades and what you see will be ever-changing. And that's important, that sort of kinetic feeling as you drive through. One of the big changes from the last proposal is that the first house on the right is now 190 feet back from the street, which is about 40, 35 or 40 feet back further than the most recent proposal. And that it is also 60 feet back from the property line when I think that it was around 20 feet in the last proposal. Another change to the site plan is that this series of single-family homes instead of duplexes, so that as you drive, I don't think you'll notice that as you drive by on Main Street, but certainly as you drive in, it will look more like a typical little compound, little neighborhood for that scale. Even the width of two units together is probably around the size of a generous single-family home. So the site plan has a slightly curved layout, the 20-foot road, the sidewalk on one side, granite curb on that side, and that the street elevation is approximately 116, going up to a high point of around 126, and then back down to around 116 in the back. So there is some topography, but most of it is on the two sides, and we are weaving our way between the two. There are two images that I think sort of say it all. But one is at the end of the cul-de-sac. The designs are A-type design. You can see that it's not a copy of the houses on Main Street, but it has the same vocabulary. It has the same massing and the same spirit. The materials down at the end in our cul-de-sac dominated by shingles. So a shingle style with heavy trim, two-car garage. Every unit has a little porch. All the master bedrooms in that area, the vast majority, are on the first floor, and that the secondary bedrooms and loft are on the second floor. As we get closer to Main Street and we start converting from all duplexes to some single-family homes, and in particular, the facades that face back to Main Street, there I'm trying to be a little bit more literal as to what is on Main Street. Clavards, shutters, double-hung windows that are the same proportion that exist deeper into the site, a little more woodsy, out toward Main Street, more compatible with the existing homes that you saw in those photographs and that you've seen a million times driving down Main Street. So here we see setback, I forgot what I just said, 190 feet on the right and somewhat less on the left, and the massing of it being as low as we just talked about.
Before you take that picture down ...
Of course.
Where would I be standing to have that view?
So you would be standing probably at the drive going into the religious facility here. So here is Main Street here, then the church whose name escapes me, I'm sorry right now, that's where I took photograph. But that's the feeling that you would get. The sidewalk from Main Street is on the other side of the street. It rises and goes down, and that's the feeling you would get as you go along. Some of these trees are to be planted, so I can't say that all of those trees, most of the trees from here back are existing, and most of the trees, other than those that have to be removed for safety and line of sight, can be saved in this bulb area. But along the street, I imagine, you would have some street trees. But it's a relatively small building. I think it's, most of them are under 30 feet all the way to the peak. Excuse me for a second. Yep, there's what I was looking for. So one of the facades on the right side as you drive in is 29 feet above the first floor. So in that perspective that you were just looking at, the building on the right, say that the first floor is up two feet, so it's 31 feet from the ground to the peak. It's a relatively small house, all of the, I'm sure that's above the scale of the other houses that we looked at in those photographs on Main Street. Along, so that's what we see toward Main Street, and then along our driveway, there's a garage and that sort of form that you've seen in, compatible with our other units. Key pieces are clavards on Main Street, a mixture of clavards and shingles as we move on into the site and into the wooded area, double-hung windows, a generous new wind roof pitch, which I think is essential. If you get too shallow, yes, it costs less money, but it seems like it belongs in Florida. So it has to be in the ballpark of 1 in 10 to 9 and 12 to 12 and 12. This is 12 and 12. Occasional use of a notch just to be a little frivolous. And the use of shutters, at very least on Main Street, maybe further into the site. Mr. In the highlights, we're ready for whatever questions you have.
I don't have anything at this time, so. On the design though.
That was a good description of the design. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
In terms of the floor area of the homes, where do they range from?
From around 1,800 square feet to 2,500 square feet. There's more than 25, about 18, which has to be for an average at say 22, 23. If you're gay, you know, and speaking of hattuck square foot, not a basement, not a garage, which what we would consider to be finished.
Mr. Chairman, that really concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any other questions about, obviously, any components of our proposal or talk about the waiver requests or however. We don't have anything else to present formally.
Bear with me one second here. While Mr. Fisher's looking through this, do we know which ones will be the affordable units at this point? Which units will be?
The market, there's submission, but numerically, number 2, 4, 11, and 13. 2, 4, 11, 13.
One of the things that you mentioned, one of the changes, is that the target for the affordable housing, instead of being the 50% of the area median income is now 80%. The project eligibility letter that we have says that the project was going to be targeted to the 50%. Has there been a change in the eligibility letter?
I'll have to refer to our amended letter, but either program is allowable by Mass Housing.
But this was the original one, and I thought that the amended letter was for the other project that's now been withdrawn.
But, well, you need, well, I believe the amended letter, and I should have that, I don't have it with me, I believe the amended letter said something to the extent of we can go back to the original plan, any other things will be taken up, but final approval.
Okay. I just want to be clear, what standards of eligibility are applicable to the project, and it's consistent with what is being proposed now? Do you have the amended eligibility letter? The amended eligibility letter related to the 20-unit single structure?
Right. But I think Jeff's referring to a catch-all paragraph that Mass Housing put at the end of the letter.
Got it.
Go back to the original plan. That original plan was at the 50%, but it was at 20% of the units.
Correct.
20% of the units would have to be at 50% AMI. Now they're at 25% of the units because they're at 16 units, so they can then be up at 80%.
Everything related to the building.
Okay. So did I, because it's no longer around. Right. Okay. Okay.
The issue here is that either 20% at 50% AMI or 25% at 80% AMI would qualify to the statute. Is this more just a literal test of what's been formally reapproved by Mass Housing? Is that it?
Yeah, I need, we need to understand what the standards are. I'd like to hear from our consultants on this, and Emily, I'd ask you what you'd like us to look at, and which one to go first.
Should we start with Jeff and review traffic to the extent there may be modifications recently?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates, your traffic consultant on the project. So I think as was mentioned, we did receive new plans. I haven't had a chance to go through them in detail, but they appear to address the comments that were raised in our last review letter, which we had submitted at the end of April. And just to kind of walk you through what our original comments were relating to the site plan that are reflected on the drawings that you received tonight. As we looked at the plan that came in, it addressed the majority of our comments that we've had probably since the past year on the project. There were three areas that we asked them to do a little bit more work on. The first dealt with the cul-de-sac areas. You might remember, we started with a road width that's 20 feet. There's a couple of items that we had asked them to look at in more detail relating to that road width. The first was to make sure that they could get a emergency vehicle in the site, circulate, that trash and refuse recycling vehicles could also get in. One of the items, as we looked at that road width, was in the cul-de-sac area in particular, as the fire truck circulated, that the bucket part of the truck that overhangs the front, its swept path went over the sidewalk area, so it was critical that in that area around the cul-de-sac, that there would be nothing that would exceed seven feet in height, basically, on what describes the sidewalk side of the cul-de-sac, as we had asked them to make sure that anything of that height would be placed at the backside of the sidewalk. And I believe the plans that you had before you tonight have a note indicating that that is in fact to be the case.
Yep.
The other item that we had asked for is on the curb type within the development itself. The original plans that we had reviewed specified Cape Cod curb. When you do have a sidewalk that's adjacent to the travelway, you need to have vertical curb adjacent to that with a six-inch reveal minimum. And so they have gone back, and where the sidewalk is, I believe, they'll have six-inch reveal curb, and that'll transition to a Cape Cod curb on the other side. So we believe that based on the current submission, that the plans are responsive to that comment. And the last item we had indicated is just to have the site plan catch up with some of the recommendations in the traffic study, and in particular, that at its intersection with Main Street, that it stops and then a stop line be installed at that location there as well, and I believe the plans address that. Just a couple of other items to note. We focused a lot on the sightlines at the intersection. So what you do see in the current submission is some revisions relating to the grading in this area here. As you might remember, looking to the south, we had suggested that some additional regrading take place, that we made sure that because the sightline's actually across the infill area here, it will accumulate snow, and so we want to make sure that there's some added level of safety in there to make sure that some snow accumulation can take place when you still have sightlines. So they have in fact increased the grading in this area here. So under conditions such as today, the actual sightline that will be afforded to the south along Main Street far exceeds the posted speed limit, what they've measured. So not only gives us the sightlines required under winter conditions, but under non-winter conditions, when there's not snow there, we have sightlines that far exceed what they measure in terms of travel speeds on the roadway there. We did though ask, as you saw, kind of in the plans, the renderings that you have, there's still some proposal for landscaping. They do have a note on the plan that says nothing to be planted in that area that would exceed two feet in height. We always want to make sure that you get an engineer certificate, that basically you have a professional engineer go out there, make sure the sightline does in fact meet the requirements that they're showing on the plans there, and that that becomes a part of the record as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on.
With respect to sightlines north?
Yes. The sightline to the north, a couple of things. It did exceed 1,000 feet is what they had mentioned, but the caveat on that originally was there's a fence there that needs to be removed, and there was a double utility pole. That second utility pole has since been removed, so all those sightlines with the removal of the fence, which would happen with the construction of the driveway, should be in the order of about 1,000 feet looking in that direction.
And with respect to the regrading that you mentioned, is the regrading all on the applicant's property, or do they need access through other property in order to get that regrading accomplished?
The regrading that will take place actually occurs within what's described as the public right of way, so from the standpoint of ownership, it's actually the town's public right of way. So rights would be needed to be obtained from the town to actually go in and do this regrading. So the regrading and any vegetation maintenance removal that needs to take place is either within their property or within the right of way that the town owns along Main Street.
So nothing with respect to private property?
No, everything is within town or land or on their property.
Okay. And I know there was discussions about taking down trees. What's shown in these plans with respect to trees?
I don't believe it's specified on the plan here. I know originally we had spoken about three to four trees being removed. I don't know if that's since changed. The critical thing for us is that anything that is in this area here needs to be removed to the extent that it creates a sightline obstruction. So the applicant basically saw their responsibility to do whatever needs to take place there, and then to have an engineer certify that the sightlines are met. I know, again, originally they were speaking of three to four trees, and I don't know if that's changed.
And with respect to snow removal, where, I assume that's still your domain in terms of where that's going to be placed?
Correct. In this area here, we always specify that there should be no placement of snow in this area here, and that that needs to be cut clear at all times. That actually would be a condition relating to the project itself, even though it's within the town right of way, because they would need to clear that.
So I understand that no snow will be placed there, so where would it be placed?
The applicant would need to find a place to basically put it. From our standpoint, as long as it's removed and put in a proper location, that's a critical thing. that's a critical thing, and the applicant will comment in terms of what their plans are for it, uh, from our perspective, it just needs to be removed.
Got it.
Joe, I got a phone call yesterday, asking from Emily and Randy Sylvester, who's a tree warden, kind of, they work together.
Make sure you speak up a little bit.
I'm sorry. I, I got a phone call yesterday from Emily and Randy Sylvester, who's a tree warden.
Yep.
Um, Randy stopped by, because he was trying to figure out the plans, because he had been spoken to about three trees, but he looked at the grading plan, and I don't, I'm not sure which one is the right one to look at, but I'll just say C2A.
C2A.
And I guess his question was, how do you do the amount of regrading? That, like, this plan, that's just called a site distance evaluation, you know, it did plant trees that were blocked, but the question he had was like, how do they do that amount of regrading, and not be affecting trees that are still shown in the regraded area, or how do you regrade and keep the trees at this, more in addition to those three? So that was one of his concerns, um, particularly since he had gotten an email from the applicant saying, well, what's the penalty if we take down trees without permission? So that raised his concern, and he stopped by to talk to Emily. So I, obviously, I could not answer the question about how you regrade, but he would pay, he had just talked to Emily, and so they called me to raise a concern, but it's really a question for the board, not for me.
Well, in many ways, it would be a question for the applicant, so for example, if a permit was to issue saying, this is the regrading that you're proposing, but these are the trees that are allowed to be taken down, they would then have to accomplish that within that, within those parameters.
Is that physically possible? No.
If it's not, then it would be built.
Well, yeah. I've spoken with our team about this, it warrants additional confirmation on our part, which we'll endeavor to get you immediately. My understanding that it's really still those three trees, Council's point is noted, and we'll, and we'll answer Randy, but basically, we're asking, because it's a safety issue, if there are trees or grading that needs to occur in the right way, that we'd be given permission to do that. I would also disagree a little bit with Council's characterization, and my question to the tree warden was not, how much do we get charged if we remove trees without permission? He's the one that told us originally, a long time ago, I simply asked him to remind us what the fees are, both for removing trees with the town's permission and without, so it wasn't some nefarious who were not planning, going out there, you know, gonna, to raise everything in there, so I, I just want to make that clear, so.
The, the, the issue of removing trees, you're, you're here in front of us for a permit, you're asking for permission to remove trees, um, and to the extent a, a permission is granted, but the idea of removing trees without permission, I don't, how would we ever find ourselves in that position?
Nor would you, so.
I'm just saying.
Right.
Collectively, all of us.
Right.
How would we ever find ourselves in that, but so the, the question being, what happens if we take something down that we didn't have permission to do? We clearly do not, we don't anticipate that ever happening.
We understand, we understand. So, it, we understand it's, it's a point of sensitivity, we will in short order confirm whether or not it's just the three trees, or there's some additional trees, and for the record, it's, as you, as the board notes, the removal is, however you characterize it, whether it's our transportation engineer, or Mr. Dirk, or them collectively, it's a safety issue, it's not a, it's not a, because we think it'll be pretty, or we don't like the trees there, it's an issue of sightline visibility, so that's why the trees removal question is being, is being brought up.
Got it. This for Jeff?
Just in terms of the whole issue of, um, street trees and shade trees and state law.
Oh, I, I think, I think, I, I didn't, but I think we should complete with the consultants, and then we'll, I think that's right. Emily, Susan, anything else for Jeff?
No, no Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then our next consultant, John, do you want to step up to the, the mic and introduce yourself?
John Chessia, Chessia Consulting Services, um, as the, as you know, and as the applicant has expressed in their correspondence, for this project as a 40B, they're, they haven't really done, or maybe they've done it, but they haven't submitted, you know, drainage calculations, and that all the design calculations that go along with the project of this type that will ultimately be required. So, this plan, from a utility perspective, is basically exactly the same as the 18 unit plan, and I don't think anything has moved, they can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I think, I know the buildings have moved here, but I don't think they changed the wastewater disposal system, even though they knocked down a few bathrooms, uh, bedrooms, so there's a little bit less flow. The drainage is in exactly the same places, the grading is a little different, because these units have been moved, so that's changed in this area here a little bit, the rest of it is basically the same as the, as the last go-round, so, um, you know, I can go through the comments I sort of went through before, but basically, you know, we're gonna need all of that information at some point in time, well, drainage calculations, they're gonna need a border help permit, they're gonna need a conservation commission, order of conditions, all of that stuff, you know, will be required, they've already expressed that they will do that at a risk, and they know that they haven't done it. So, um, I don't have a lot more comments other than that, you can go through some things if you'd like, um, but without the data, it's sort of, you know, that's all gonna have to come.
Well, one of the things that's important to the board is, to the extent that waivers from various regulations are being requested, we want to make sure that the waiver is absolutely needed. So for example, if the number of units has gone down, and as a result, um, the wastewater system need not be as large as previously proposed, then the waivers that would have been required for that larger system are no longer justified, because the system doesn't have to be that large. And so we need to know
Right.
What the appropriate systems will be, in order to gauge the appropriate level of a waiver. And so I'm concerned that there hasn't been the changes commensurate with the reduction in the project as proposed.
And the wastewater system, I believe, has capacity for four bedrooms over what is proposed, so that would make it slightly smaller.
Or six, is it, reduction bedrooms is six, from 54 to 48?
Well, I think the 18-unit plan also might have had a reduction
Okay.
A little bit, so.
Okay.
In any event, so, if, if it's built for that reduction, it would be slightly smaller, and probably a little easier to design for the engineer, but it's still gonna need, uh, treatment, it's still over 2,000 gallons a day, it's still gonna need all of that stuff, it's still 50, you know, the location's the same, it's, reducing it by the four bedrooms would not like eliminate an entire row, it would probably make them a little bit smaller, so it may be not quite as close to the property line, or not quite as close, right now, it's basically pinned on all the sides, as far as the setback dimension, so what that would probably do is, instead of being, say, 10 feet from a property line, it might be 12 or 14, instead of, you know, 10 or 20 from the slab or the foundation, which would just be good practice, if you could just give it a couple more feet, then you have a cushion of.
Right, and just as a general rule, not for 40Bs in particular, but for almost any project that comes in for variance, if someone is looking for side yard setback variance, and they only need five, and they ask for eight, they're not gonna get the eight, they're just gonna get the five feet.
Right.
So, this board is, is not inclined to grant, to over-grant, um, such, such waivers.
But the way, I think though, relative to the board of health ones, they're still, they, they're not asking for a sideline, they're not asking for a waiver from a sideline setback, or a foundation setback, I don't believe that they can make it small enough not to need
Okay.
The, the wetland setback. Um, also, you know, portion of, there's a big wetland here, partly it goes this way, and partly it goes that way, they haven't done topographic survey and determined where that divides, but this way is to Fuller Mill Pond, which is a wa, a water, surface water slide. This way is to the Eel River, which goes around, so it's not as sensitive from that perspective. Um, so, when I looked at Mass GAS, it looks like the divide is, you know, somewhere in the middle here, of the upland portion, so you can't really, you know, can't really say what, but setback wise, they'd need those variances, as far as the, um, I didn't do the math on the 10,000 square feet per bedroom versus the 12, whatever, but I believe they did, and I think that that would knock off additional bedrooms, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to go for the board of health.
To comply with the local bylaws, would go down, party three bedroom, 48.
So, um, so basically, the setbacks, the density, there is treatment, so it would, um, nitrogen would be reduced, I'm not, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly which waivers they've asked for relative to what health, but I don't think that would change it enough to change any of those waivers that they've requested, we can, I can take a look at that.
I'll just support Mr. Chessia, I don't believe
Yep.
The reduction from 18 to 16 has changed
Right.
The need for any board of health or conservation related waivers, so your questions are quite good, but from a waiver perspective, that the changes have not resulted, some of the other waivers have come off, but not as a result of the reduction in density.
Yeah, okay.
Obviously, we have a site here that, um, is, uh, adjacent to, or includes a sensitive area in terms of the watershed, and, um, we've heard, um, I think in previous hearings from members of the Board of Health, talking about the rationale for the local bylaws, um, we've also, um, to the best of my knowledge, in the past, we haven't, I don't think a 40B has come through where we haven't had, or we, we've had a review engineer like yourself say, you don't feel you have adequate information to draw conclusions. Um, so, I guess my, my question is, it would be very helpful for, for me, and presumably the other members of the board, to know, from the standpoint of sort of compliance with law, whether that's case law or the statutes, the applicant is, is saying, we bear the risk, when it comes time to build this, we'll have to meet all the criteria, um, in order to, at that point, we can demonstrate that these systems work.
Right.
We really haven't faced that before, in, in town, I've been involved with 40Bs for a number, you know, decade or more, and we really haven't had an applicant take that position, so I think, from the standpoint, I think it's important for, for the board to know, and probably the public to know, if in fact, that's what 40B says, that, that, um, as you've raised that in your written responses to us, um, just sort of, in terms of the rules of the road here, we should all be clear that we understand, um, if the applicant's position is justified by the case law or the regs, it would be nice for us to all know that, and if not, it's something we clearly have to discuss, because in your report, you said that you believe you have inadequate information, so I'm just trying to figure out what the rules of the road here are on this issue, because we, we really haven't faced that in any 40Bs that I'm aware of in Hingham, that I, where I've been on the board.
I, uh, I have in other towns, faced, as a reviewer, faced it, I mean, um, most frequently, I would say that you get the calculations, because you know they're kinda need to do, they know they're gonna need to do them anyway, 'cause they're, you know, the conservation which they're gonna have to file, they're gonna have to do all that.
Right.
So usually, and not all of them, but usually you do get that, you know, maybe not all, you know, you don't get total construction drawings, but you get the calculations, and in fact, with the single unit building, they did drainage calculations.
Right, the one that's not before us.
The one that's not before us. So, that did give some information on existing conditions, essentially, those calculations indicated that there really isn't, there's almost no runoff at all from the site, the soils are reported to be good, evidence of soil maps and the holes that I did see indicates that's the case, it's gonna be pretty much all gravel and it's wooded, so the water just drains right down.
Right.
Which means that they will be required to recharge all that water, to make it match what's happening today, um, and obviously, they're confident that they can. Um, I have had cases like that, and then the, it's just, the onus is on the board to condition it in a manner that you get all the stuff that you need, and then, you know, they'll have to submit construction drawings with all that data, and then it gets reviewed then, um, as part of that, the building permit application, or how, whatever.
Is that, Susan?
Yeah, I, I mean, they don't have to submit them now.
Right.
The position it puts the board in, and it put in the other boards in commenting to you, is, I think if there is a local reg that you feel is particularly a concern, you may have to say, you know, to the extent that, you know what I mean, in the event that the plans don't meet this, we're not leaving, I mean, that's the position that you're in, because you don't have the information. So, um, to just waive everything, I mean, you could just waive everything, um, but you, to the extent you don't have the information, you're doing it in a vacuum. Um, if Board of Health or Concom or John have identified items of local concern, that they said, you know, if this is the case, if we had the data and we knew this, we would recommend you not waive it, then you have to decide, do we kind of conditionally waive it, you know, waive it, but not if this, or only waive it if this, so, I, I mean, it's just awkward, it's an awkward
Yeah.
Kind of interpretation, but I think that's the only way you can do it.
Please.
Bob Engler of SCB for the record, um, I am very, very clear, over my 40 years of working in 40B with 11,000 units and 150 cases, the vast majority of applicants, in my experience, take seriously what the law said when it was created, you're at risk, if you don't get a permit, we don't expect you to be doing affordable housing, to spend money doing working drawings and detailed engineering, and then get denied, so it's very clear that the framers of the legislation, and the courts, the Housing Appeals Committee, and the courts uphold the decision that says, yes, the zoning board doesn't have a lot of information, the consulting engineer doesn't have a lot of information, that's deliberately set up by the statute and regulations and the guidelines, so that you can at least know you have a permit when you go spend all that money, which you're gonna have to spend, by the way, in more detail when you go to Concom, but not in front of the zoning board, you have, we have given you, in my experience, 90% of my cases, that's what the applicant does, whether it's also somebody we work for. It's rare, and it happens, and Susan's seen it, and John's seen it, that an applicant may want to choose to spend all that money knowing they're gonna have to, yes, in a situation where it's ironclad clear they're gonna get the permit, they might as well start now rather than later, quite frankly, we don't see that here, so we're not willing to take that risk until we know we're permitted, you know what the cloud is already about going on with this project, so, we have every right to say, it'll come later, it's at our risk, you get to review it, we can't get a, a building permit or a CO until it's signed off, that we've met all these statutes. We still have the right to ask for waivers, because we're trying to live with state law, no, not the local bylaw. You asked, Mr. Chairman, months ago, the Board of Health, tell us why local bylaws are more important here in Hingham, and why a 40B applicant shouldn't just be held to state statutes, but local. We have yet to hear, and Bill Buckley has written you that, we've yet to hear the reason and the documentation substantiating that the local bylaw is necessary for this project to meet in order to protect the health and safety of all residents. We haven't seen that, we're still maintaining we have to meet state law, we're asking for the waivers of the local bylaws, we understand that in Derby Brook, you gave a complete waiver of the Concom bylaw, there was even a crossing in that situation, but all the local bylaws waived. We're hoping for the same thing here, so that we can get to our work, and come back and get all that detailed work done on a later date.
Well, I think in Derby Brook, there was actually the information that we needed in order to make that assessment, which is a big difference between that project and this project, and I think the presumption is not that the local bylaws, the local protections are automatically waived, you default to the state, it's, a waiver is appropriate, only if, if you stick with the local rules, it would make your project your project uneconomic. And our challenge is, we are not sure to what extent our local bylaw really would make your project uneconomic because we don't know, we don't have all the calculations. So it's not, the burden has not necessarily been shifted, it just hasn't been met.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, but let me just say, all our waiver responses have covered those issues and to the degree, and this is supported by the Massachusetts Supreme Court, the Housing Appeals Committee, the baseline for this project is what we're submitting, 16 units, less than 20%, less than 15% profit. So anything that reduces units from there, by definition of the courts, makes the project uneconomic. So when we say we're losing a unit or two units or four units, we can give you numbers and debate that, but in fact, the matter are, loss of units means the project is rendered uneconomic. Upper issues, maybe a cost issue, you want to put in vertical granite curb, and if we said, "No, we can't afford it," you have every right to say, "How much does it cost and what does that do to your project?" We've said we'll put it in. If we said we didn't want a sidewalk, we can't afford it, then we have a right to look at those numbers. But correct me, Jeff, I don't think there's anything in our waiver request other than reduction in units or the project can't be built as planned because it takes out everything. I don't think there's those issues that say, "Well, you can do that and not do what you're asking to and still have a project that's viable." But I think if we go through it all, eventually we'll see that there's nothing extraneous or we're not asking you for something that we don't need, and we're hopefully not asking you for something that you feel like you don't need to give us and we can still have a project. But I think it remains to be seen as we go through each one of them.
Yeah, we were going to go through the waiver requests. Exactly.
And I will say that at least in our experience for the last decade or so, where I've been on either the planning board or the zoning board, we haven't faced a situation where a 40B applicant has come in and our review engineers have said, "I don't have enough information to do my job." So I'm just, I'm just reporting the facts. But so this is, this is new to us, and that's why I asked the question, to make sure that we understand what the ground rules are so that...
John?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have much more to... Yeah, I mean, I did write a comment letter. It's pretty much the same as the previous comment letter. I can go through various points if you would like, or I don't know that it's going to add too much to the discussion.
Well, I think, and we can delay this part if you'd like, but this Board is going to be looking to you for guidance as we go up with the waivers, come up with conditions to make sure that we have the appropriate performance standards so that local interests are protected.
And I have been working with Emily on that, at that end. I mean, there are some things that we've been discussing and working through regarding that as far as what the drawings should have in them when the time comes. And there's a few things that I commented on as far as the, you know, the way the plans draw, the basic design things that have been worked into that. So I haven't done too much with the waivers in this latest, for the conditions, but I expect that'll probably fall.
And when these, when the wastewater treatment and the stormwater management systems are fully designed, they would come back to this Board? How would that work?
I can answer that. Probably, they would probably not unless you condition it that the final construction drawings are reviewed through this Board. Because they would, I would expect that the procedure would go like this. They would take the plans and then they would go maybe next to either Board of Health or Conservation, or maybe both simultaneously. After that, when those permits are obtained, then they would be close, presumably, but maybe have to do a little more to get a final construction drawing set. One of the, you know, recommendation items is a profile of this road and some things like that, so you can see all the utilities and profile, and see if there's conflicts, that type of thing, for construction purposes. You wouldn't need to do that for Conservation or Board of Health, but ultimately, you would need to. And at that point in time, all of the order, like if the order of conditions required something done on the plans, all that would be rolled up into one thing. That's typically the process.
So we wouldn't expect that they come back?
Well, I'm not sure I understand. So for example, if they were to go next to the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission at that stage would only be acting as a state entity. It would only be looking at state regulations.
The state regulations.
No, no, no. No matter what we do, the Conservation Commission can only act as a state entity and can only look at the state standards. This Board has to act as the Conservation Commission with respect to all local provisions.
Correct.
Okay, so to the extent that there is a request with respect to a local provision that we're not sure to what extent it really needs to be waived, the Conservation Commission cannot act on that. We are required to act on that.
Right, you have to act on the buffers zone and all that.
Right, so to the extent that there are issues being raised about whether or not you have enough information to give us advice, deferring to the Conservation Commission will not address that.
You're right, you're right.
With regard to the local...
With regard to the local...
With regard to any of the local issues.
I mean, the local requirements essentially relate to the buffers to the wetlands of which, I mean, the wetland line is here, and Hingham, I believe, there's a 50-foot no-touch.
Right.
So if you drew a 50-foot offset, I mean, you're into buildings in the 50-foot offset.
Correct. So, but that's the perfect example. So to what extent does that buffer, the conservation buffer, need to be waived?
Just about to, well, you know, in this case, it looks like, you know, it's probably like, maybe 10 feet or a little under 10 feet is how close they are to wetlands along this side. Here is replication of flood plain, so that's probably closer as well.
And to the extent that there are adverse impacts on the local environment because of the waiver request, this Board needs to be able to make the assessment as to whether or not those impacts are so dramatic that we should reconsider granting that waiver. And that's why I'm saying that's not something that's deferred to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, we have to deal with it, right.
And it's parallel issues with respect to Board of Health.
If you, and I think what's happened in other cases in terms of projects like this that I've worked on, so Concom has a 50-foot buffer. What can you achieve, you know, 50 feet in the building? I don't know that moving that's going to probably affect the program to, in a way that would be uneconomic if you lose a building or two because of that buffer.
Right.
So what is, what can you, what can you get? What's a reasonable buffer to get? Is it 15 feet? Is it 20 feet? Is it...
Right, in other words, is the only buffer that's appropriate here the state standard? Or are there local reasons why we should be looking for something greater?
I would say, yeah, generally, the more you have, the better. It's pretty much documented that the bigger the untouched area, the more protection there is to the wetland, you know, but that's why the 50 feet are, you know, usually enacted.
You know, under the state regulations, you could go right up to the edge of wetlands, theoretically. I mean, you would have to demonstrate that there's no alternative to doing so.
Right.
But you could do that, yes. That would be allowed under the regulations.
And some of the conditions to consider perhaps would be if there is grading in that area, that it gets restored to some somewhat of a natural, it gets planted. We don't have a landscape plan either, so you don't know what's proposed, but instead of a grass slope right down, you know, plant it back, somehow mark it so that it doesn't become part of the... All of those things have been done in projects I've worked on in other, you know, in other towns, that they've, they might have done the work to get the thing built, and then they come back and they plant it, and they give another strip that's not necessarily natural, but grows back to natural, so you end up with, with a buffer. And I think that's something that probably could be achieved here, is something along those lines, and it would probably make sense to talk to the Conservation Agent a little bit about that as part of the process.
I mean, I think, to kind of bring it all back, I mean, it's kind of like you can't , like, the town doesn't take the stand, and on the other hand, they don't have to do it. They don't have to do it. People may wish they do it, other applicants may have done it, it may be easier for John and the other boards to advise you. If they don't, they don't have to do it. So I think we're just down to kind of what John's last comments, which is, okay, the houses, the units are in a buffer zone, is there any sort of mitigation, other types of conditions that will help protect the edge of the wetland and beyond the edge of the wetland?
Right.
Because I think, you know, there's a lot of discussion about how it would be nice to have a book, we don't have it. So I think it would be helpful to focus on comments like John's last one, like if he's getting, you know, with Emily, said, "Okay, there should be a re-rating and planting and that kind of thing," I think that's a helpful...
Right, great. We have a representative from the applicant, I think, if you could just introduce yourself, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. Just briefly, because what Susan Murphy just said is definitely something I agree with, that type of spirit of saying, "Okay, yes, you can work on conditions that presumably would still allow the project to go forward, but also be in conjunction with waivers." The point additionally that I would like to make is, aside from the fact that my experience, Bob and I together, or SCB and I together, have probably done more 40Bs in the state of Massachusetts than anybody else, and my experience is certainly as is his, there are some times when applicants provide many details, but there are, in my experience, the majority of times that they don't. The only thing I would like to point out is you're not, and I understand the spirit of what you're saying, you're smart guys, smart folks, and I, you know, respect that, you're not really shooting in the dark, it's not like you have no information. You have the requirement as well as information from the applicant and the engineer that all of these things related to wetlands and the Title V septic system will comply with the state standards. So in terms of getting advice, as was just discussed, from your consultant, who I've also worked with, certainly very capable, and your Board of Health and Conservation Commission, you're not comparing it to nothing, you're comparing, okay, on the assumption that the state standards, DEP wetlands and Title V regulations, DEP regulations are completely complied with, what is the comparison of those standards in terms of your local bylaws that we're requesting waivers from? And I think you will have enough information because you know what Title V requires, and as John said, a lot of the waivers relate to really distant setbacks and things like that. So you're not, although you don't have the fully designed plans, you're not without substantial information as to what the potential impact could be from granting the waivers. So I just wanted to emphasize that in conjunction with, I agree, I think normally it's worked out with the applicant and the Board that conditions that help mitigate as you feel is necessary. And there is indeed case law, just so you know, more quite recent case of Sunderland versus the Housing, excuse me, Housing Fields Committee. The issue was on wetlands regulations, and the basic decision of the local Board in denying said, "Oh, we didn't have enough information." And this went all the way to the SJC. The SJC said definitively, "No, under 40B, I can read you the regulations, but I won't take more time. Regulations clearly allow what we have done." The SJC said, "No, the testimony of the expert is that the project will comply with the state standards, and that's enough in order to have the project go forward, including waivers that were ultimately granted on the appeals." So enough, but, you know, I think what Susan said and some of John's comments were moving in the right direction, but I didn't want to leave tonight with you folks thinking that it's very unusual, because I don't think it is, and in reality, you'll have a good standard to compare to, the state standards.
Todd, anything else for...
No, that was, that was very helpful.
There's something that came up that's in the notes about utility separation issues. I mean, I will note, and I did talk to one of the contractors for the water council commission, and this is going to be so, it doesn't apply, but you know, particularly if you have sewer lines and water lines, the utility requires separations because a break of one, if that enters the other, it could be a disaster, that type of thing. So I think to the extent that some of the kind of standard conditions that the Board puts in says that there has to be, there will have to be a utility plan, it has to comply with all utility provider requirements, and if they require separations, they're going to have to figure out how to create those separations, we're not going to have a road to build. So I think that somewhere between John's comments and their rejection of John's comment is the truth, which is the utilities are going to dictate where the utilities have to go. Does that sound fair, John?
Yes, and I think as part of that, with the construction drawing, at that point, the utility companies, Gas, Aquarian, Hingham Light, should have drawn their piece into it. Nowhere transformers, manholes, and everything are installed, need to be installed. So you have all of that information before the final plan goes for the building permit. So, and you know, I understand, when you're drawing a plan like this, you don't have that information. In fact, a lot of the utility companies don't even look at the plans until there's a permit issue because they don't want to waste their time. So you have to kind of use some judgment and you draw things in. They may come in, you know, the electric line is a single line that goes along like the side of the road. If you look at a duck bag, you know, they can be four to six feet wide, and you have manholes, and you have transformers, and you have all those different things, all necessary, somewhere along this road, that all that information has to be there to show that stuff is not going to have a conflict. So, and that was one of my comments.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know that they're, you know, they're comfortable that they can do it, I just think that what, it'll probably look a little different than what you see on the plans you have in front of you now for the utility plan, because there's a lot more stuff to put in there when you look at some of those. Not quite, it's not quite as easy to fit.
Going to Todd's earlier question, your permits have traditionally had a final construction plan set must be submitted.
Yes.
So I think you're going to be covered on all that.
Great. Good. We should hear from some members of the public at this point.
Sure.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Yes, sir. You could just state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Walter Sullivan, 893 Main Street. A couple of items that I'd like to mention where the abutters closest to the project. As I'm sure the Board is aware, since the applicants were last here, they appeared before the Selectman for Shade Tree hearing. The Selectman turned down their request to remove two of the three trees that have been referenced as impeding the line of sight of this project. Obviously, the applicant are honorable people, this town is well familiar with them, we know them all the way back to Linden Ponds, and as they've said, it's not their first time around the rodeo. But it's always possible they could sell this product to somebody else. I am alarmed by the comment about what would happen, what would the penalty be if we just removed the trees? So we would request that this Board condition any type of permit or occupancy certificate upon them being in compliance with any decision by the Selectman as it relates to the Shade Tree statute, which as this Board knows, is a state statute. I would ask that somehow or another, the decision protect the town with respect to that issue, other than just an oral representation here tonight, that that would be a problem. With respect to the materials that have been submitted here tonight, the Board well knows that my wife and I hired our own review engineer, Tom Pozerski, to review a lot of these materials. Tom told us to stop sending things to him, that it was very unusual because there was nothing to review. The reviewer of Mr. Chesley's most recent letter sort of confirms what Tom Pozerski from Maryland Associates has been telling us. Maryland Associates finds this process very unusual as well. While we don't have the experience of Mr. Freeman, Mr. Angler, we are not unfamiliar with the 40B process. Certainly, it could have been more cooperative or collaborative, and, you know, we are mindful that the applicants keep saying that they're doing it at their own peril. The last thing I'd like to draw the Board's attention to is, in reviewing the file today, I note that the last materials that were in the file relative to DHCD approval indicate that they have the land under agreement for a joint price of $900,000. The purchase and sale agreements, the only two that I see in the file, indicate the land is under agreement for $1,025,000. So if those aren't current, there should be some evidence in the file for this Board to have jurisdiction, that they have the property under their control, and I see no evidence of that. So I raise that as a question, whether or not this Board currently has jurisdiction to continue to hear the applicant if in fact, the deal has changed, or in fact, if it hasn't been more or less than written. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that last part. The difference is, as the Board is well aware, particularly Mr. McGrath, the land value that's carried in the budget is the appraised adds of value, which is $900,000 or $925,000, whatever it is. We're actually paying...
We're actually paying over $1 million for the property, we have the sites under agreement, those purchase and sales have been submitted for a record, they're at Town Hall, so there's no shenanigans or whatnot. We're in fact abiding by the statute of how it has to be represented, so the correct land value is shown. Granted, we're paying more, but the correct land value is shown. And relative to the Board of Selectmen and the tree warden hearing, we went, because we were trying to be helpful, as the board had asked, and we got, to put it lightly, slapped on the wrist, the chairman said, they've never had, I don't know, people in the audience would know this better than I do, I don't live in Hingham, they've never had a tree warden hearing since he's been a chairperson, which I think he said six or seven years. One member said, we have no business being in front of the board, it's not their jurisdiction, it's a matter of the zoning board. And they looked at safety for not one second, they basically said, what are the condition of the trees? Are they on a scale of, I think, one to 12 or one to 14? This tree was a 10, so it was unhealthy, it can be removed, the others were more healthy, and they could not, and that's the judgment they made. They didn't look at, they didn't care about sightline, they didn't care about any of that, they looked at it by the statute, by the law, how they reviewed those. So, the characterization, you know, of the review, you know, we tried to be helpful and go, they didn't want anything to do with us, so.
I don't know, do you want to, you want to say?
One second, one. I'm going to have, Peter, do you want to comment?
Just real quickly, because this question came up, I did, I do not submit, I prepared a memo on the tree warden issue, and my strong belief that the tree warden indeed is a local official under 40B. I won't take the time to go through it, because I presume there's going to be another hearing, but I have a very thorough memo.
If you don't mind submitting it to?
Absolutely, I just submitted, copy to council as well, and you can all go over it. So, you can read it, and if necessary, discuss it next time.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Susan, now, did you want to?
No, right, and I don't know, it's up to you and the board, when you want to actually have a full discussion of this particular issue. I was at the shade tree hearing, so, just some clarification, I mean, the shade tree hearings end up at the Board of Selectmen, only if someone objects when a shade tree hearing is, you know?
With the tree warden.
With the tree warden, or if the shade, if the tree warden makes a decision and it's appealed.
Yeah.
So, the tree warden has, I don't know how many times a year, but multiple times a year, has shade tree hearings. He's, it's just that in the last six years, no one's objected and no one's appealed. So, it was unusual to be at the Board of Selectmen, however, if you put the 40B to a side just for a minute, it was the proper procedure, because the tree warden now, having been faced with an application for a hearing and an objection, had no choice, and neither did the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, so that's the reason why, it wasn't that, two members of the Board of Selectmen did not say, we don't want anything to do with you, they did what they thought was appropriate under their jurisdiction. There was one member of the Board of Selectmen who said, I don't understand why you're here, why aren't you at the, so that, that is accurate. But just so, it's not that the Chairman of Board was confused as to why they were there, it's just noting that it's an uncommon occurrence.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to clarify, there's a real gap in the tree ordinance, because the Selectman and the tree warden look at the safety, the health of the trees.
Right.
We're there because it's an unsafe condition by your traffic consultant and ours, so the issue wasn't whether they're healthy or not, it's whether they're unsafe or not.
Right.
And they did not take that up, it was just to be seen part of their jurisdiction.
Right.
They only evaluated the health of the trees. If you wanted us to go there to see what they wanted to do, they weren't, they didn't have any capability or interest in dealing with the issue that you have, and that's why they sent us back here, it's a safety issue, deal with the zoning board, that's what we came down.
And Joe, what I will, what I'll say is, I think, once you figure out, kind of timing wise, how you're going to proceed with, kind of considering the whole body, what you have to consider, then, you know, determine a time to say, okay, let's review Attorney Freeman's memo.
Right.
Look at the statute, you know, I can, I can kind of add further to what that, but I don't know that this is the point in time right now that you want to go through the thorough discussion.
Yeah, no, I absolutely would like to read what he submitted, so, I agree, we'll, we'll table that for now.
All right.
I do want to make sure that other members of the public who have comments or questions have an opportunity. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Jason Ryan, I live on Brewster Road, I am the abutter on the Eel River, at the back of 901. I appreciate that the board has asked several times, what are the values that our bylaws are trying, that we're trying to sort of protect, and are they, do they represent a burden, a higher burden than the minimum standards set by Title V and other state statutes? So, I thought that I would try to sort of assist with answering that, because I think there is something important to protect with respect to this project, which is different than other projects that have taken place, unique perhaps. So what's worth protecting, I would assert that the town's water supply is worth protecting. And I know that in this context, that might sound like hyperbole, but this is actually just a week or so after our town meeting, where we had a very long and detailed conversation in that forum around the Aquarian purchase.
Yep.
We had a gentleman who's a resident of the town, and also a nationally known hydrologist get up and talk a lot about the sensitivity of the aquifer, the likelihood of Hingham running out of water for 25 years and having to buy it and import it. He, in that forum, highlighted the challenges and significant time investments required to perform adequate and thorough studies in order to really understand how the hydrology of that area could impact the aquifer. That is, that's part of, you know, the Foley Mill Brook, and the Eel River eventually connects into that as well, even though it's on the far side of the lot. So we know that failed septic systems cause aesthetic issues. You can drive on Derby Street, you can see all the dead trees next to the Bank of America building down there, as evidence of that, but this isn't an aesthetic issue. I think this is an issue that deserves a more detailed study, a higher burden of evidence. I think this location, this site's location in the protected districts already implies that the hydrology of that wetland is connected to the aquifer, but we have no data, I don't think anyone in this room can say they really understand what's going to happen in 25 years when that septic system fails to the quality of the water that Hingham, Cohasset, and Hull residents depend on. But, why talk about 25 years from now? When you look at this plan, if you look at Site Plan C2, there are retaining walls on the wetland border, right? They're not on the 50-foot buffer line, they're not on the 100-foot buffer line, they're on the wetland border. I don't see how it's possible to construct such a thing without being in the wetland, to hold it up from the other side while you're filling it with dirt on one side. So, I think there's a much more imminent threat to that water structure, just on the construction of this site, versus something that might happen down the road. And of course, if there ever is a failure, there's no room to put this system in a different location on the site, you've got to take all that dirt out, get up, pull that whole system apart. Who's going to pay for that? The homeowners, the developers who are long gone, even if they put money into some kind of fund, could never earn enough to pay for the millions of dollars of repairs. And by then, it might be too late in terms of Hingham's water supply. So I appreciate any condition that you could put on your permits, that would require the studies adequate to the sensitivity of this site and the fact that they're located in a protected area, thank you very much.
Let me ask?
Can I just ask one thing?
Well, I, very important, where did you get a Hingham hat like that?
Oh, at the Hingham Center Pharmacy.
Very nice.
I wear it when I'm on TV.
Or at, or at town meeting. You made a statement that there was retaining walls right on the edge of the wetlands, can you tell me where that is? Because I'm kind of looking at one retaining wall here that's not really on the wetlands.
So I see, I'm on Site Plan C2.
Yep.
Behind units.
I'm looking at C2A, I don't know if you have the grading plan.
This is the site plan.
Site plan in C2.
I'm looking behind, at the back of the cul-de-sac, behind Unit A15 and A14, you can see some scalloped.
I think that's scalloping the edges of the trees. Are those bales?
It's a tree line.
It's a tree line?
Yeah, that's a tree line.
Not, not a retaining.
No.
The retaining wall, there's actually, I think I saw, there's a retaining wall.
It's on the back of Mr. Sullivan's property.
Yeah, D7, like behind what, D7?
The modular concrete block wall.
Yeah, something behind D7 and A8.
And the modular concrete block wall behind Mr. Sullivan's property.
Correct.
Yeah. And then the scalloped.
Scallop, is this tree line?
Those are the tree lines.
Yeah, it's actually the tree line.
Okay, well, so then I appreciate that clarification, thank you very much.
I just wanted to make sure we had that.
Not an engineer, so, but thank you.
I'm not one either, but I play one on TV. I work with a lot of them.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Chris Donovan at 12 Independence Lane.
Could you possibly speak a little louder?
Sure. I actually heard the engineer tonight say that they, say that the square footage of the lots is now roughly at about 10,000 square feet. So I wanted to know if that had changed, since this is the revised plan, has that changed the size of the lot from the last plan? And if so, is that a larger lot or a smaller lot? And if it is a larger lot, would that have anything to do with any of the possible fertilizer or any salt from, from the snow in the wintertime? And would that affect any of the runoff into the wetlands, which are right there? And then also, they said tonight that it went from 18 units down to 16 units, so that would be, that would be a 25%, would be the 40B. And I just wanted to get that straight, and, and I would like to make one other point, and that is, it seems, it seems like everybody involved in this project is actually from outside of Hingham. It seems that the engineers and the owner is also from Newton. But I actually live in this town, and so I know that area very, very well, and, so, I know what the traffic concerns are, and, and I actually pass that down every day and see how wet that it is in there. So I'm very, very concerned with the wetlands in there. And I just wanted to say that it is also my understanding that when the, when the property is sold, that the person selling the land, that house will be, will be removed from the property. So, so she will make out in it, and if the project is done, the developers will make out in the project. But if there's a, if there's ever a problem there with the wetlands, we, as the abutters, will get stuck with the problems forever. So, so I just wanted to make that point clear. Thank you.
Jeff, did you want to respond?
The 10,000 square foot, yeah.
Just a point of clarification, we used, basically, we used math to arrive at an average lot size of over four acres divided by 16 is now approximately 10,000 square foot per lot. But these actually, as you know, a condominium association, so they're not individual lots per se, it's a common lot. So, we're just making a point, if you will, relative to the, a better evaluation would be how a unit per acre comparison, but not really, well, each lot now is 11,000 square feet, it used to be nine, or whatever. And also, there's, I'll just speak, we submitted a memo, but a lot of characterization about the preservation and the proximity of what we're proposing to the Eel River and whatnot. We're over 800 feet from the Eel River, the state requirement from a protected body of water is 175 feet. So just by way of comparison, our roadway, I think, is 600 feet, give or take, add another 200 feet, and that's how far we are from the Eel River. Somebody had made an assertion at one point, you know, we were on top of the Eel River, the Eel, like the Eel River ran right back through the resource area. It's not like that, and we're over 3,000 feet from the closest well field. So, our strong contention, and supported by Baycall and the group and other people on our team who've done this, is we're not going to be adversely impacting the water supply or other resources in Hingham.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I forgot, I was all in the road, I don't need a mic.
You don't, you definitely don't need a mic. You should give lessons in voice projection, too. Medical.
I swear. I really, I mean, I do not like this comparing our neighborhood to Derbyburg, there is no comparison whatsoever. You are trying to put in these units in two established neighborhoods. Derbyburg is on Route 53, on a highway with no houses, no neighborhoods, and not worried about septic system at all. We are all worried about the system. I have a backyard that's always wet in the spring, and it's going to be wetter, and my neighbors are all going to be wet. So no, I don't, and I don't think you should compare it to Derby, there's no comparison.
Did you hear me all right?
Absolutely. Crystal clear. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I think we need to go on to the waiver requests. Susan, you have something else you think we should be dealing with first? Jeff? Did Peter leave?
No, he's right there.
Oh, you were, I didn't, I didn't say, okay, I just didn't want to be doing, he's hiding high bar. So I just, I just.
A lot of those attorneys are snakes in the grass.
Okay, let me make sure I get the latest one that we're working with here. So this is the, I am looking at the six pager that was in our packet, it's not dated, I'm just going to put a date, I'm going to put today's date on it now. And so what we need to do is, we are going to go through the requests that the applicant has made for waivers from the zoning bylaw, from the general bylaw, and other others, and additional waivers.
Are we going to do it incrementally versus what we had previously discussed in a hearing, or are we going to start from scratch? I have the same question, yeah. Other substantive changes? Yeah, I mean, are we going to just focus on changes, or are we going to revisit?
The better course is to look at the changes, I looked at this to see if it was marked, what was changed, so I don't know how to accomplish what you've just suggested.
I consent ever to do that, I follow what you stated, and we did add, one of the things you asked that was not in the last, even for some of the ones I think that you had, how would I phrase it, tentatively granted, is you tried to beef up the certificate slash explanation column in this request, because you would ask all the.
Yeah. Right.
We agreed to do the grant, so we did take them out. Yeah, I don't think, we, we have not, another way to say, we have not added any waivers in the previous version, we have taken out waivers, which obviously, you know.
Well, those are, I could suggest. Well, just one second, for example, when we went through the waiver list the last time, one of the issues was, in fact, the trees. You remove that from the waiver list, you said, we're not going to request a waiver from you, we're going to go to the Selectman. So that's, now, it's here. So just, just so we're factually consistent, I think you have added waivers. You're looking, I, it was very dramatic, because, it was very dramatic, and ultimately, when you see the minutes, you'll see, I mean, it was, we will not make that waiver to this board. So, and I'm not saying that the course of action you're pursuing is not rational, what I'm saying is, we need to make sure that we are looking at waivers that we, that are appropriate, and that, in my view, that's a new waiver for us, because we actually did not make any decision on it, even on tentative basis, you withdrew it.
If we're going, if we're going to...
If we're going, if we're going to look at just the incremental changes to the waivers, that's obviously a much, we can do that without a marked version, or we can do it with a marked version? Do you have it?
I'll tell you, you know, I went through, that was January 8.
Right.
You didn't, I mean, you were walking through them. I mean, some of them, and I remember Dr. Schill's was here, and some of them, he had said, "Oh, well, the Fuller Health Brancos all the time, anywhere," so there were a few like that. But for the most part, you discussed them, you didn't say, you didn't actually get to the words of, "That's fine, that's fine, that's fine." So, you know, we can, I mean, I guess I don't know kind of at what point you're saying, yes, we're going to include that waiver, and no, we're not. And I would think that at some point, between now and when you render your final decision, you have to do that. You're going to have to go through this the whole time. So does it make sense tonight to just look at, to try to figure out what's new, what's different? Or, because at some point in time, you will have to go one by one. So when, when, now, when you get to decision night, when?
No, I mean, I think it's before decision night. I think that we need to go through it now. To the extent that we've got questions or issues, we need feedback from the applicant on whether or not this is something that makes it unethical. That's not going to be the last night, because in fairness, you guys need time to respond. So I think that's now.
I think it makes sense to go one by one and say, "It's okay," or that there's still a question, so that it's clear for the board and for the applicant where they stand on these waivers.
What I may do, and tell me, I can pull out the original waiver request that we went through, have them side by side, and we can see to the extent that there are any changes. Well, that just may be adding an extra layer of time.
Yeah, I mean, this is it.
I apologize, I mean, shame on me, relevant tree, but I honestly, I mean, you can do that. I mean, however you want to perceive that, I actually think most of them, and we've taken some out that you guys, that aren't necessary, but I think, Susan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, other than adding some additional language, there aren't any new waivers.
Let me ask you, Susan, that you guys were satisfied with an explanation on some of them, but you never really kind of said what you're going to do with it. Went to the next, you were satisfied with the explanation, went to the next, and said, "Well, what about keeping all of the hill on site or whatever?" So you'd ask questions, you'd answer, and then we stopped and said, "We can't finish." But nobody ever said, "That's done," and so I think, you know, she liked it.
Yeah, I think we need to, right. Okay.
Pull up the list and say, "We've covered that."
Well, let's, even if we've covered.
It'll take longer than that.
Yes, that's, that's the problem. So we have six pages. I'd call it five and a half, five out of six pages. Okay. So if, as we do this, we've got the zoning bylaw, we'll also need the general bylaw.
Yeah, we've got.
The relevant, okay, well, let's first hit the zoning ones. And if either of you can think of better ways to do this. No?
No, no, go ahead.
You've got to get through it, so. Okay, so the first one is Section 3A, Schedule of Uses, Subsection 1.1. Let's find the first.
It's a table of use.
Sixteen.
Okay, subsection 1.1, the requirement, multi-family dwelling use not allowed in a Residence B district. You would like a waiver to allow multi-family dwelling in the Residence B district, and clearly, there could be no project without this waiver. And.
I mean, I think state, I think state law, that's what 40B does, so I don't think there's much to talk about there.
Right, yeah. So I, I don't think we need anything further. It was not like, insufficient information on this.
Correct.
So.
So that waiver is?
So we are not voting on waivers. We will only have a vote when, when this is over, but we will at the end say, "Here are the waivers that we would not be inclined to grant." So the second one's Section 3C, floodplain and watershed protection district, no activity in Zone A as shown on the FEMA map. Alum, yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that Emily and I were conferring on the side while you were talking. But Emily's pointed out, they have a mixture of single families, and they have a mixture of townhouses. Single families are permitted.
Correct.
It's the townhouses that are not permitted in the district. So the waiver they actually need is from 1.6, not from 1.1.
But it's not a, it's not a single family, it's a condominium unit that's unattached, that's just a.
It's a detached condo.
Yeah, detached condo, it's not a single family.
But listen, they don't want a waiver from subsection 1.1, which allows single families. They need.
But it's not a single family.
No, but it is, if you look at the definition of a single family dwelling.
But they're looking for a waiver, they need to do a multi-family, which is not allowed in column Residence B.
Okay.
So you follow column Residence B down to multi-family townhouse, and that's prohibited in Residence B. So they need a waiver from 1.6.
Yeah, a single, a single family dwelling, and it doesn't speak to zoning, okay? This speaks to the structure.
Yeah.
A free-standing dwelling, excluding mobile homes, intended and designed to be occupied by, by a single dwelling unit. So it's a dwelling that only has one dwelling unit in it. That's a single-family home under our definition. A townhouse is a dwelling unit attached by party walls on one or both sides to one or two other dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
So they have, so forget about.
Five of those.
Forget about form of ownership.
Yeah.
Our bylaw defines, there's a dwelling unit, which is like everything you need to live in, right? And then there's types of dwelling units, which are single-family dwelling units, townhouses, multi-family, like an apartment building.
But so the only difference between a single family and, and a townhouse is whether or not it's attached or detached?
Right, and the detached are permitted as a right in the district. They just, the, the other waiver they're asking for later is more than one.
More than one.
Right, but this is the form of dwelling unit.
So it's a technical.
Right, but it's still not quite accurate. So I think they don't need 1.1, they do need 1.6.
Okay.
And Emily caught that.
Okay, well, let me ask the applicant.
This is where it gets really interesting, folks.
We'll review that, but I would trust Emily's judgment.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
plausible.
Okay, so we're talking about 1.1 or 1.6.
As applicable.
As applicable, yes. The next one, which is Section 3C, floodplain and watershed protection, protection district, no activity in Zone A as shown on the FEMA map. They will be filling within Zone A, what they will be providing for compensatory storage, which is allowed under the Wetlands Protection Act. Look at the notes here. It's also under 3C, under our special permit. So this is one where part of the waiver would be a requirement for compensatory storage. And I don't know if we know what compensatory storage we would be requiring.
They're proposing one to one.
They are proposing, right.
And, and John, could you just confirm the Wetlands Protection Act would, would do the same thing, so this also would be required?
And what the Wetlands Protection Act requires is that you, compensatory storage on an incremental basis, so if you fill elevation, let's, the floodplain is 99, or if you fill some of elevation 97, you have to have an equivalent 97, and you have to have an equivalent 98.
Right.
I have a comment on that, but because on the area of the plan, it also appears that it may be a floodplain, it's an elevation 98, but it's a hole.
Right.
So if it's elevation 98, floodplain is 99, it's right next to the, it's here, so there's maybe more than one indicated based on that lower area.
Right.
And that isn't for the septic, that's for building. So if in fact, that's floodplain, then they only can get a waiver from the septic system. It would be a problem.
Right.
That hasn't been determined.
Does the local wetlands bylaw provide for more compensatory storage than one to one?
Well, it doesn't allow filling period, so I don't think it has another provision. I know for wetland replication is a requirement for the.
Two to one, that's what I thought.
Replication, but for floodplain storage, it's not generally allowed. I'm not sure if it has anything in there, although I will say that typically, if you're designing something, you're smart, it's a little bigger, so that when it's constructed, you make sure that it needs it.
Right.
Which I wouldn't, I thought that's an issue, if they really, really don't, but.
So if, if we are looking for compensatory storage, what should be our performance standard here?
I think it would be what, what John just outlined, which is the requirement of the State Wetlands Protection Act.
Incremental.
Right.
On a foot-for-foot basis, if you want to, I'd have to look back to the wetlands. I don't remember ever reading in the general bylaw, floodplain, that's first for, I think, I know a lot of wetlands.
Right.
But I don't think there's anything in there that I can help check on it. One to one is what the state requires. I don't know if it costs any to make it 1.0.
That's what I'm asking. So if we did 1.5 to one.
Oh, 1.25, whatever, if you think, just make it a little bigger.
Right.
Then you get a question.
And so if we did that, is that a question that's going to create a problem for the applicant? Okay. So I think we should go for, for 1.5 rather than just one to one.
I have a, Jeff, it's a small area, so I think there's plenty of room.
Yeah, okay. And then with the other issue, that they're, they may need an additional waiver?
Well, I think it's the same waiver, but I think that, well, it's their, their plan. I mean, if it were me, I would cover both areas. They haven't identified one of them as part of the floodplain, because in the initial existing condition plan, the contour was misleading.
Okay.
Fears that it may be, but it was certain it was a 98 contour, which is more than that.
So do you.
Right next to that.
So do you want to leave this waiver request as is, or perhaps revise it based on this discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman. The, the area we're talking about is, the floodplain is, you have to know there's some filling here.
Right.
And then John's saying there might be some filling back here.
Right.
So we don't know definitely what the filling is going to be yet, until you do our file of oil, bearings, test bits, design.
Right.
We know this compensatory storage is required. We don't know the exact volume. You want to make it 1.5 to one.
Hmm, okay.
All I'll tell you, all I will say is that if you want to make it 1.5 to one, that means we're disturbing more area of comfort. So we have to dig it up.
Correct.
It has to be against the law, more near the law. So just as long as you understand that, it's not a problem. So you can get more volume, but you're going to get more disturbance in the water.
Do we want to flag this one, maybe, and get some comments from the Conservation Commission before you vote on the waiver?
But we're not voting on waivers.
Right.
No, but I like the idea of, if we can get some advice from the CONCON, let's do that.
Yep. I suspect they would want to go up. Okay, okay.
Well, and they're going to look at the issue anyway, because they have to go to the.
Yes.
No, they wouldn't be required more than one.
Right, right. Okay, the next one is Section 4B, special requirements to schedule dimensional requirements, subsection 6, site plan review performed by the planning board, waiver requested, consistent with Chapter 40B. That's in fact, correct. There's only one board that you need to go for, so I don't have an issue with that. Section 4C, general intensity provisions, subsection 4, oh, no, I just did, no, I didn't, sorry. Subsection 4, density, 16 dwelling units on a single lot.
And whereas no more than one dwelling unit should be located.
Right.
In a single lot.
So the waiver that you're looking for is to allow the 16 dwelling units. Yes. And again, that is the essence of 40B here.
Right, yep.
Okay, next one is Section 4E, residential multi-unit development, subsection 5E.
Okay, so Joe, we had, at the original discussion of waivers, the whole discussion of, does 4E apply?
Right.
And they had taken them all out? So I would suggest it's actually confused, I mean, there had been a determination that that section doesn't apply at all, so to just, to pluck out a waiver of one subsection infers compliance with the rest of 4E, which they're not doing, where we had already kind of come to a conclusion, I think, where the board had, after a lot of analysis, you don't really have to go there. So I think it's confusing to include one subsection. Either you're waiving all of 4E, or you're just saying it doesn't apply at all.
Can I comment a bit? You won't be surprised, I totally agree with her. The only reason I put this in, and maybe we can get it a different way, is we do a lot of affirmative marketing, audit work, and we did Derby Brook, and we worked with Sharon Newt here. But this project, there will be affordable units, there will be, and the only point I was trying to make is the local preference definition that's currently promulgated by the town is no longer allowed. So however you want to handle it, whether it's a waiver, we're going to need to do the administration, and we don't want to run afoul of what's allowed by the HDB. So we would defer, however, that was the only point I was trying to make. I agree with Susan, I'm not saying that multi-unit development applies, but that was where you addressed the local preference.
I would say either waive the entire 4E, or just decide that it doesn't apply at all, and doesn't even need to be referenced. I think it's one or the other, because this will just create confusion. It is flagged that we have to update our zoning bylaw.
Right, right.
The board generally contains to the extent permitted by applicable law, local preference, and then the town has to go through the whole exercise of writing a letter to the HDB, justifying why the local preference is necessary and appropriate, and we do that for every project. And I assume we do it likewise this project, although I can't assume, but I also, you know, if you were to put in a similar condition, we'd go through the same process with the HDB.
We'll take it.
Okay, so item five, I'm scratching out. Section, item six is Section 5C, earth removal regulations, subsection 1A, permit required, no loan, no soil, loam, sand, gravel, or other earth materials are removed from any lot within the town unless such removal constitute exempt operation. Waiver is required to allow, so, right, excavation is clearly required as part of the building program. Where is this? What page are we on for this? Section 5C.
Eighty-eight?
Somewhere in there.
Eighty-eight. So we do know that there will be excavation. Do we know if there's fill on it? Well, I mean, it looks like from grading plan now, we don't really know if it's a balanced site or not, do we? No. I'm just wondering if we really know we need the waiver to remove material.
Mr. Chairman, I would guess this site is an import, we are bringing material into the site.
Right.
Can't imagine we would take material off the site, but there's like a lot of loam there that you can only use it, you know, you can't use it on the roadways, you can't use it around houses, septic, so we might have to export that, because an overhaul on the site is an import site.
Okay, so I'm confused, why would this be a waiver? Why wouldn't you simply be asking for the permit?
Well, so, I mean, it's really procedural. It would amount to the same thing under 40B. We're not asking for any special permits, you don't need to ask for special permits under 40B.
Correct.
But if you, by the way, you have to deal with it, and otherwise, it would be in violation of the town bylaw if they remove that loam. So it happens in this town, and the special permit is normally granted under 12, so we want to.
So it happens in this town, and the special permit is normally granted under 40, so we want to see now where.
Right.
And it seems pretty kind of ominous as a side, but you would just issue this a waiver.
Well, I mean, for example, if there is going to be removal of soil, we may condition it that it go to some other place in town rather than going to another town. And so we're not necessarily, you don't need us to waive that condition in order to have this permit.
I have to defer the end here.
Right.
But, you know, that's not going to be reasonable subject to the commentary.
And since, right. Yeah, right, so, and so.
But this says we're not allowed to do it. By giving us a condition, you're allowed.
No, it doesn't. It says it can't be done without a permit. Right.
Well, that's why I say it's just procedural. If you don't want to have a waiver for rocks that would apply, it's not per se a special permit, because that's under 40. But if you as part of the comprehensive.
Right.
Given a condition or a state defining the condition that says you're allowing it to be under a reasonable condition.
Right.
But that's not, I mean, it's more, to me, it's more standard for you to have a waiver condition.
Well, but are we waiving it subject to a condition? Isn't that what we're doing?
You're waiving the requirement for a special permit.
Correct.
Right?
Subject to, like, let's.
Correct.
If you did the floodplain one.
Right.
You would waive it subject to them doing the one with 5.1.
Subject to.
So this would be the waiver of the necessity for a special permit, subject to whatever condition.
Condition, right. So I think it's waiver, I think it's waiver subject to.
So if you would put the condition to the condition section under the waiver list, you would say waived, subject to condition number X.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah, I think that what was, the point I'm trying to make is we need to know what action you want to do so that we can either issue it as part of a permit or as a condition. It's not as if you can remove soil alone without the request to this board that you're going to do it. If you're going to do it, you need to make that request now so we can actually create the condition. So we are, do you follow me, Susan?
Kind of. I really think that, I really think it's a.
They're not sure if there, to the extent that there might be.
I think you waive it and you impose a condition.
I think you're just going to impose a condition.
So, help me. What condition would we be imposing? Since we're not sure what it is that they would be doing.
Any material removed would be located in some other part of town.
Soil, loan, sand, gravel, et cetera. If they, if they, you know, regulated under this.
Right.
Such removal shall be subject to the following conditions.
Well, it says pursue it to a special permit. Why isn't it just pursue it to a comprehensive permit? That's what we were saying. Our removal is pursuant to the permit that you issued. So you can add a condition on that or not, but pursuant to having the comprehensive issue. So that's really under changing.
Let me just add a fraction.
Yeah, exactly.
When we are, so when we finish our workings, right, and we determine that, all right, we have 300 cubic yards of loan that has to be removed. And nothing else, that's what we do. I'm not trying to.
No, no, that's, no, 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 that's exactly right. That's exactly the right question.
Our conditions would have to anticipate the result like that.
That's right, and so that's.
Come back.
Well, I don't, I don't.
We just want you to comply with our condition, and now we're struggling with how do we write the condition?
Right.
What the information.
Right, and the typical way is you actually have the situation, you make the request, and we're saying, you know, this is ridiculous, just card it here. Or we, we're anticipating many things which may not happen, only because we don't have the specific request.
What's the other condition, something to the extent of once, you know, the cut and fill analysis is completed, the amount of material is known. Notification will be provided to the board, engineering department, and the board will make a determination on whether or not we need to come back in to explain what we're doing.
Yeah, right, right. I got you. I'm not looking to have this as the never-ending saga.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious as to, let's assume.
Yeah.
They move in whatever, keep something of a soil, I don't know.
Right.
What condition would you impose? Why can't you just say, if they're going to do it, this is the condition or conditions? Doesn't that make it simpler? Like, are your conditions going to change depending on whether it's one cubic, three cubic? You know what I mean?
Right, I mean, the conditions are typically, are listed actually here. So we can actually do up the conditions in this way.
Right, and the final construction plans and specifications will designate, once they get there, how many cubic they're removing.
Right. Where this waiver was going was, they can do the removal and it's not an issue. They don't have to, there's no permit application process. And I'm saying is, that's not the case. That in fact, they need to make that application now.
Yes, and I think by asking by for the waiver, that's kind of what they're trying to.
Right, okay. Yep.
Yeah, what other, I'm not telling the other things I've seen, I think Hingham actually has a subdivision that, if you have an excess, or they usually put in as a condition, where does it go?
Right.
And the question, of course, is like, if it's, you know, five truckloads, fine. If it's 5,000 truckloads.
Right.
They reject, it's not going to be, but I mean, you know.
Right, and that's why I don't want to come up with conditions for 5,000 when that's not in the realm. And that's come up with other properties in town, and I just don't want to be caught not having anticipated that.
Because when other people apply for special permit, they have more data, more understanding of what they're removing.
Correct, right, yes.
So we've asked for an exception, and you're saying, why don't you come back when you have details, we'll grant it. So Susan has to work that language out.
Why don't we just?
I, Emily, between Emily and myself, I'm sure we can come up with language. So, but is it, are we still in kind of the mode of you're granting a waiver subject to a condition? The condition's going to be, figure it out back?
I think so, because.
But I think we should have certain minimum standards in here, so if they don't exceed certain thresholds, they're not going to have to come back.
Yeah, yeah, you can waive it up to so many cubic yards.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't have to, if that's what the board decides.
Yeah, and typically there's a, there's a preference that at least someone's going to have to look at where it's going.
Right.
And we'll deal with that.
And not to further complicate this, but the, but the exception in 5C, I think, would mean that it's only the material that is not excavated or removed.
Right.
In connection with the lawful construction of a building, structure, or street, the driveway, et cetera. So to the extent that there's anything that doesn't fit that exception, that's what we're talking about.
Right, that's right.
Based on building footprint, road, that sort of stuff, then you can, but if you want to do more than that, basically stripping soil, then that's what this triggers.
If all you were doing was what fits within this paragraph, you wouldn't need a special permit.
You wouldn't need a waiver.
Right. Okay, so I think we're, we have a meeting of minds on this one. Okay, and that was number six, I believe. And that concludes the zoning bylaw requirements that you sought waivers for.
Okay.
General bylaws. So now we go to the general bylaw requests. Article 10, public ways in common land. And this is just two.
No, so this is the street opening.
Yep.
Oh, I see, there's one for each of us.
Is there one for each? Thank you.
Here we go.
Um.
Yep.
They have just article 10, it's kind of a little confusing, because number one is article 10 completely.
It's actually section 12, so to this.
Okay, but it doesn't say.
Right, 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 so we need to be clear which section.
It's section 12.
So your list doesn't have for number one, section, but then for number two, you have a section. But originally, in the original list, it was section 12, right?
I assumed that, so I put it on my.
Right.
It says article 10, section 12.
No, that's not there. That's bar notes. This is their list.
Oh.
It wasn't never on your list.
Was it section?
I think it's section 12. Because that's, that's breaking into a right of way. Oh, yeah.
No, it didn't have a section.
It never had a section from the beginning. So you have, you always had number one, that was completely just not identified. And then you always had number two, that was 34A, so.
So are you looking for a waiver in article 12 from a section, other than section 12, for your first request? I'm sorry.
Article 10.
Article 10, section 12. So we're going, so this is limited to section 12?
So this is breaking the surface of digging up sidewalk or any other part of the way.
Yes.
So this has, goes along, comes along with it, a list of conditions for restoration that DPW has provided.
Yep.
So it would be a waiver with condition that you need condition X of the permit, which is going to have all the DPW restoration provisions in it.
Yep, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, has the applicant been given that? Okay, and, okay, so they're fine with that. What about timing? Is this a moratorium issue or not? That's a later one?
Okay.
The moratorium wants.
Are we outside that window or will we be outside that window?
But is that, is part of this?
Okay.
It's not this.
Okay, so that's not this one. Any other issues on this one, Susan?
No, it's just subject to restoration condition.
Yeah.
Performance standards.
Susan? So on section 12 of article 10, I don't see any other issues there, other than.
Lighted lanterns.
Oil pots that they used to place up.
No, I mean, this is, yeah, it's just breaking the surface of.
Right, correct, yep. Yes. Okay, so we're in agreement on that one.
Yeah.
The next one, article, same article, article 10, now we're up to section 34A, which is removal of soil loan. No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It is, oh, it is.
The same as.
This one is.
Same as.
That you can't take it out of the town.
Right.
So this is over and above the zoning.
Zoning bylaw, that's right. Okay, so, and what you're committing to do is to attempt to provide the excavated materials to local contractors working in Hingham.
I think what Bill said was, we're not going to have that much that we're not worried about taking it to some.
Yeah. Right.
Best efforts, possibly find somebody, I don't know, we have to keep it down.
Yeah, I mean, I would make it up, I guess that's just a functional standard.
Well, if no one's there to accept it, right.
Well, one way to deal with it is waive it here, but like they said, you know, whatever, they'll use whatever efforts you can define, best efforts, reasonable efforts. To do it, you can have that in a condition under the zoning one.
Right.
Do you know what I'm saying? So, because there's no way to waive this with a condition, if they can take it out of town or they can't. So either you're waiving it or not. So if you want.
Well, you can waive it with a condition, which is they have to make the best efforts to provide it to local contractors before they can.
Before they get.
Yeah.
Right, so you can do it either place.
Or the town.
Yeah, or the town.
Or the town, if it's loan.
Right.
The town, so you.
Certainly a lot of public land that where we could.
You can condition.
Yeah.
Notified.
Yeah. So that's, correct, what it would be. Okay.
Reasonable efforts.
Yes.
Including written notification.
Yeah, so reasonable efforts and notice, yeah. Okay, next one. Article 22, wetlands protection bylaw, section two, regulated activities. A waiver is requested as activity will occur within 100 feet of a resource area. The applicant will comply with this state wetlands protections. So how much of the 100-foot limit do we need to waive? And we don't need to waive it uniformly with respect to the entire project.
Well, it's going to affect units 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Well, yeah, we're going to the extent of our submitted plan, yeah, that's what we know. We're going to say, we don't like it, but it's a show of our own plans, which, you know, obviously is still in that process. And any change in the plan requires us.
Right, I mean, that's, that's conceptually where we're at. And so.
Same thing for 50.
Right, but, but just so we're clear, what that means is if the plans do change because of whatever, you got them back. Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, if they change where we're closer to the wetland, I mean, after some reason, they're further.
Right, if you come further, then, then it's not an issue, exactly.
Correct.
So this one only is required by the plans, right? Yes, the, yes. Okay, next one, article 22, wetlands protection bylaw, section 2B, regulated activities, which this is the 50-foot buffer strip.
Same thing. So 50-foot goes through units 14 and 15, and it goes through the decks or the patios of 12 and 13.
So we should talk about that. To the extent it's going through units 14 and 15, I get it. If it's going through decks, can the decks be going in a different direction, or can we say no decks?
Well, these are patios. These are, so I misspoke. It looks like, they're all patios, correct?
Right.
These are ground.
All, all patios off the backs?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
All right, plans, I don't have a magnifying glass, but the plans say LL patio or something like that, lower level patio.
It's lower level.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks.
Right, right.
All right, doesn't indicate, yeah, it doesn't indicate deck anywhere, but at least the plans do say patio, and that's all they say on them. So in this case, it would affect 12 and 13, I think. 12 and, 12 and 13, yes, you're right, 12 and 13.
So in this case, if we say we are not waiving the 50-foot buffer strip with respect, we are only waiving it for respect to units 14 and 15, because it affects the units, we're not waiving it on 12 and 13.
Well, once again, that's a wide.
Yeah, no, right.
No, no, the sonotubes or whatever you're going to have.
We litigated over this one, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'll.
And one.
Right. You can't go in, you're going to disturb, you're going to be disturbing within.
I mean, I mean, Joe and I both sat on the CONCOM on these issues and similar cases, and we.
I didn't sit on the CONCOM, but I've appeared before many.
You did so, no, no.
I've appeared before many. I like my Saturday morning, sorry, thank you.
Very easy. I have like.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Well, but the other thing is on, on unit 12, on unit 12, it looks like it's so close that I don't know how they would put in the footings without encroaching into the 50-foot, so.
Well, the depth, it's a good point, it's a lot of grating on the 50-foot too.
Right, yes, just going to say that.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't know that it's, it's just so much, you know, that it's just so much the patio. You're right up, you're almost right up against the foundation wall here, so you're really, and the other ones, the other ones hit the house.
Right.
So it's really, you know, maybe 13, you could, you could, you could actually build, build the structure without.
But you'd still be doing alteration within that 50 feet.
Right.
Even near.
Yeah, even, even.
Than that, yeah, just to the gray.
I think, you know, from a practical standpoint, I think what we've said about 100 feet is probably no different than what we should.
Correct.
Say here.
Yeah. So you think that they, they would need the 50-foot again as shown on the plans?
As shown on the plans. Because if you look at the grading that goes down to the, to the tree line.
Yep.
That is, that's all, that's all finished grading. They're, they're, they're doing a lot of work in there. Right? I mean, that, that's not existing grading, right? Those contours are, those contours look very engineered, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right.
So, so they're working within the, they're working within the 50-foot buffer line in connection with six, I think, 16, 15, 14, 13, and 12. in connection with 16, I think, 15, 14, 13, and 12, and then you've got, then you've got, and the septic system is shy of that, but then even down here, as you go to the tree lines. They're, they're working right to the tree line, in terms of disturbance.
Yeah, but, but one, there's one thing to have a permanent incursion, the other thing is to have working, and then once the project is completed, to, to basically go back to respect the law.
Well, really, the standard under the Wetlands Protection Act is, is intended to prevent alteration of the resource area, and as you know, alteration is very broadly defined.
Yeah.
It can mean a lot of things, like changing the drainage patterns into the resource area itself. As long as there's proper erosion, sedentation control during construction, as long as this is revegetated properly after construction...
Right.
The chances of erosion into the wetlands is probably pretty minimal here, so, so it's really, and it's, and it's all of this area behind these units and adjacent to the thing, it's all of this area that's...
And that's all going to be...
Septic system.
Right, exactly, behind, so it's all going to be a permanent change, to the, it's all going to be a permanent change...
Okay.
In that sense, because this is all going to be engineered grades.
Correct. If we allow the incursion within the 50-foot buffer, do we want to require anything as compensation for that? Which is what the Conservation Commission will do. Sometimes they require that, that you create a buffer, push the buffer out on the other side.
There's a couple things, so, just kind of behind the scenes, Emily's been working with, you know, John Chesia and Jeff Dirk, trying to pull together potential conditions, and then she's after John, bouncing stuff off of Emily, and so just like last night and this morning, they kind of started bouncing stuff off of me.
Yeah.
There's, with respect to wetlands-related things, there's kind of a list of construction related performance resource area protection things...
Yep.
That have been identified, and Abby had reviewed, and then, was it, I can't remember, yesterday, did Abby say something to you about landscaping, stabilization of this gradient, there was something, Emily, I mean that?
Yes, Abby is a bit concerned about this slope between, you know, units 15 and 14 and 13 and 12. And hopes that there might be some ability to put a brake in it, slow water down at least, and John's looked at it for us, and if you were to do that, it seems you might actually impact the wetlands more, because the gradient would move closer to the line.
It's very, it's basically very steep.
Yep.
But one suggestion, as like I said earlier, is that, and Joe said, you got a temporary alteration, you could then say, at the end of the day, you replant and let it grow back naturally, so it's not part of the landscape, it's part of the natural, and, you know, look at the plans and specify some, some distance, obviously, you have it right next to the building, but you can have, you know, the slope is, chickens, a steep slope is that one that is chasing...
Yep.
To get to the bottom, so, you know, you can look at something, let's look, I can't tell you, I'm talking about it right now, but if you look at something and say, between these units, there should be a X, we establish buffer strip, and then in other areas, maybe you can have a bigger one, because, like I'm thinking, the slope next to the septic system, there's nothing there, you know, you can pretty much validate the whole slope, and who cares? So that may not, you know, that might be a bigger strip, and then, you know, sort of work around it.
Right, but we need to be able to communicate it to the applicant, so they're not taking, it's an open check, you know?
Correct. I mean, you, yeah, you have performance standards that can provide us, we can look at those from a technical standpoint, I mean, I'm confident that you're acceptable.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's the direction we can go.
So whether it's from Emily or John, or whoever.
Yeah, okay.
I think revegetation of some portion of that slope, the bottom of that slope, native vegetation would be, would be appropriate.
Let it just grow back wild.
Right, right, I mean, obviously, you need some areas around the structure there to get access.
But is there any way that we could push out the buffer in another area to give added protection?
It's really, it's in the development, right, so...
I'm not sure what you mean by that, Joe.
There's been one longer, but I think when you take the 50-foot, because it's a mincer of opposite, you know, sort of, on the west side, it looks like the levels jut out.
Right, yep.
You have more buffer there, you know, maybe you could come up the slope a little bit, and then you get a little more, but that's about the only spot, the rest of it looks like it's pretty consistent, parallel to the...
It is.
It is, I, I agree.
Just that one little spot, you know, maybe you have like, okay, so, so far off the buildings, from that distance down, it becomes that little bit.
Right.
That's something that we have to figure out, what's acceptable, I mean, we're, you know, and I know John will be well, well, close to her, and I hope so, whether it's him or whoever, would you, that we're fine with that?
Okay, so I think...
I mean, if there are performance standards, we'd like to see them, but I don't think we have, we're about our ability to do what Emily and Abby want, so...
Okay. So we are now on item five, I believe.
Surety bonds.
Which is Article 22, Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Section 8, Establishment of Surety Bonds. And the purpose of the surety bond is to make sure you actually do the work.
The Conservation Officer indicated that she is not aware of any of the projects where the commission has required a surety bond. So this is not something they customarily require.
Okay, so comfortable with waiver of that?
Yep.
Next one, Article 22, Section 5, Authorization of Commission to Deny Projects. We're allowing it to denial, Section 5.
Five was the surety bonds.
Five, number five was the surety bond...
Right.
Which was Section 8.
Section 8, oh.
Number six is actually Section 5.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
This says the commission can deny, but will also give due consideration to hardships. So, this would, I don't know that, I don't know that you can, you can ask the commission for this to be waived, can you?
You're the commission.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, this is them reserving the right, if an applicant comes to them to say no, which...
This is the commission's right, and, right, so the answer is...
You say they, right.
No, commission.
Right, so the Conservation Commission would have this right, we are sitting here as the Conservation Commission now, they are going to have to be going to the Conservation Commission to get a state permit.
Right.
And so the Conservation Commission will have that authority under, with respect to the state requirements.
Right.
They want to make sure that the Conservation Commission does not retain independent jurisdiction to stop this project on local bylaw basis, is that a correct summary of your position?
That's not what this...
That's...
Yeah, that's what it does, okay, right. It doesn't mention local, doesn't, there's no distinction between state and local.
That's because this is, this is the local bylaw.
Correct, and I think the local bylaw goes well above and beyond state regulations in that, it makes essentially a judgment call. Under the state regulations, there are performance standards, and if you don't meet, they can say no.
Right, so I think, I would, I would be comfortable with a waiver to the extent that is limited to action by the commission under the local bylaw, but not with respect to the state Wetlands Protection Act. And I think the applicant's comfortable with that as well.
Is that, that's tantamount to saying that there's no actual bylaw that we, that we could then use to depend on, so we've actually given up, given up the right, even though we don't have a completely designed system? I just wondered, so...
You have a number of different conditions, and you can deny a project if you fail any of them, 40B, this is some kind of surplus.
So Todd, I think what I hear you saying is, are we giving up the right to enforce other provisions of the local bylaw?
Correct.
And the answer is, we're not giving up that right, because they have not sought waivers of other protect, of the sections of the local bylaw. So, but to rephrase, I think what Todd is saying is that the authority to deny the project, which would be the commission's, and it's now ours because of 40B, is limited to the waivers of the local bylaw that you have requested. So you correct that, so it should be limited, our waiver should be limited to their waivers of the local bylaw, and not to other items that they may not waive.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm fine with that. And they're fine with that? Okay, good. So then, the next item is number seven, which is Article 26, On-Site Waste Water Disposal System Inspection. Let's see here, this is...
Yeah, I think that should apply in the case, if someone sells a house, and you have to have the system inspected before the next person can use the system. In this case, they're removing the existing system and building an entirely new system.
Right.
So, kind of makes movement the requirement to inspect the existing system.
I would say, you know, way, you could waive it in connection with the sale of the existing home, but it doesn't extend to, you know, future sales.
Oh, yeah.
Right, of property or units or whatever.
Yes, I think that's...
Does that make sense?
Yes, and you're comfortable with that? Okay. Your father's comfortable with that? Okay, that, that makes sense, okay. Number eight, which is Board of Health supplemental regs for the disposal of sanitary sewage. There's nothing here.
Yep, I think the following items are...
Oh, okay, so they're, okay.
They all fall under that.
Right, okay, got it, then four, Roman four, number four, requirement to notify abutters when filing a septic system design, and then abutters have been effectively notified under the 40B process. Susan, are there any abutters who would have received notice under Board of Health regs that go beyond the 40B notice requirements? Because if not, then I don't, probably not.
Correct.
If there are, we should know.
No, I, I, you know what, this, is this, are we on 10? We're on.
We're on number nine.
Well, 10 on this.
Number nine, on, right, is number 10 on the multiple...
This is a list of direct abutters, all the direct abutters to the lot, all the direct abutters.
Have been notified by this.
Hearing.
Okay, so then, we're fine, so, so item number five, number nine, we're fine with. Number 10, Roman four, number 10, the location of existing sewage disposal systems on lots directly abutting applicant's lot.
This one, you did receive some input from Board of Health, and they agreed that partial waiver of the location of the existing sewage disposal system in the lots directly abutting the applicant's lots would be reasonable, as long as the applicant plotted all systems on adjacent properties that have publicly available information. Advocate should also be required to contact abutters whose systems are not on record to request information. The applicant shall not be required to plot septic systems whose location can act being determined through either of those means.
That's fine, we try a couple times.
Right, okay.
It just hasn't...
Right, okay, so, the Board of Health, exactly, so that's fine. To that condition.
O-H suggestion.
Okay, now we're up to number 11, which is Roman four, number 11. Okay, which gives the Board of Health, the authorities require additional studies at their discretion. So, the issue, the issue here is that the Board of Health is saying they don't have the information now.
Right.
And in fact, we keep talking about the fact that they're going to need additional information. So why are we asking for...
Now, we don't have, we're going to file everything that's required, you know, the normal Board of Health filing, which will be voluminous.
Right.
But we're saying is, what if the Board of Health said, you know what, we want you to study the heat river, just to know something you're curious about, you think, you know, we don't want to have, I mean, applying to discretion.
Right.
And both of them just credit, and we're, we're probably talking about this more articulated, and it'll be voluminous, and everything they need to make sure, John can come there as well, so that's our position.
Right, so, but just flipping your position around, your position was, what if they asked for something ridiculous? Flipping yours, what if you simply don't provide them enough information?
Right.
You're stripping them of the ability to request it, so...
Yeah, they are reviewing state sanitary code, anything that is required, give them information.
Right, but what this provision says is, if they make the assessment that you in fact haven't provided it, they can ask you to provide it, and you're saying, no, they can't ask us.
Well, that's additional stuff, we could limit it, you just couldn't create a chairman to let, the conditions ahead about the state sanitary code.
They have authority to tell them not to ask something, which is their prerogative, right, five, this type of type of five.
Correct, yeah.
And as to whether or not, we're going to take the five, not, we've got to deal with that, but this is only those two, any requests beyond.
On the title five, are they able to ask for peer review when they're finding out that?
I don't think so.
So...
I mean, not, not necessarily...
Can that go when you want to reason?
Unless there's variance that they can ask for.
Right. Does someone would like to address us on this?
Yes, Kirk Schultz.
It's, you can take it off and sit back down if you'd like.
Kirk Schultz, a member of the Board of Health, the Board of Health has not had a chance to see the most revised plans, we're meeting for that, so I don't speak for the Board of Health because of that, but I have been to the process, I'm familiar with these regulations, and I can speak to this particular issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavan and I had an opportunity to go into the state and meet with the DEP regarding this, the issue of the Title V regulations, and the effect of the Board of Health being able to require additional studies. And I believe the Board of Health is going to ask the Board to specifically consider holding the applicants to Regulation 68, which is the 12-5, limit for septic dispersion relative to bed. And with that particular requirement, local requirement, because of the unique circumstances that we have within our town, and the drinking water supply which is located proximal to this particular project, that the Board of Health would likely, and it was, talked to us at the state, that it's something that would be a common procedure, that testing wells or some type of additional study would be asked for to confirm that the waivers of any that you're going to grant to the local regulations are indeed meeting the design specifications in which the acting is provided, in which the people of the town expect. And so I would ask that you not grant this particular waiver, that it be a condition based on additional waivers that you would consider specific waivers, and we're going to give that in just a minute.
Perfect, thank you. Anyway, my reaction is that we're, this is a waiver request that the applicant might want, if unexpected things happen, the requests for information are beyond what you think are reasonable, I haven't heard anything saying that the requests are going to be unreasonable, and I would be surprised if the applicant would take the position that the denial of this waiver request would make the project uneconomic. So I would be inclined not to go with this waiver request. Joe, what's your view? Joe, what's your view? And you, we can keep going back, but we're...
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think I want to think about this one, so. So as the town moderator would say, hold on this one.
I mean, if not, if not monetary, I mean, if they ask us to do a study, it takes six months.
We want two years of testing and data to come in and see what happens. And you're being held up for two years, that's, that's regular, it's uneconomic.
Right, so, right. But what's your, the Board of Health may ask for, for, for studies that are, are appropriate given, given the circumstances here on the site. They may go beyond what you think and we might think are appropriate. What would be your recourse if you didn't have this waiver?
Wouldn't have recourse?
Well, we have, we would...
You, you would have a recourse, you've got a comprehensive permit. What would be your, I just want to know what your recourse is?
The recourse is under Title V issues, and we have qualified by, and it used to be the D E P, we're not sure how, there's certain changes lately, as I wonder that now stays exclusively with the town, or something you can't handle in the D. And I'm sure it still would be according, on the outside of the 40B, currently with you folks, but it's got to be some type of appeal.
Right.
I think Phil can speak to it for John, but the recent change in 2010 reverse, he would say acceptable property, less than...
Okay, but so, so the issue here is, we don't, we don't know whether or not additional studies will be asked for that you think are appropriate or inappropriate. We don't know. Obviously, if they were appropriate, we've now just tied the hands of the Board of Health, and I don't think that's, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, trying to balance the equities here, that's right. If they're inappropriate, then I'm asking you, what can you do about it? Just, I'm just trying to be practical here, because what you're, getting this waiver means we've just tied the hands of the, the Board in town that we look to, to help defend the quality of the water. I don't want to do...
Let me ask, what happens when the extra studies come in? The Board doesn't like the result, tells us we can't do what we want to do because of those results. Now, here's why, act on the local bylaw, by allowing you to ask for studies, you're allowing them to act on the local bylaw, not you, right? So there's a debate about what should happen, as I'm hoping, we're dealing with them with the local bylaw?
No, you're...
Studies are back to you, but if we lost our appeal, our 20-day appeal is over. So we can't re-appeal unless we appear to answer, maybe we have to change the plan, go back to you with a notification, you turn it down and then we have to appeal again. It sounds kind of awkward, but I agree with you, we don't know, and they don't know, but they may know what...
I agree, we're, I'm not, you know, it's different than with you, and I agree with that, but I'm telling you, our civil engineer, who's done a million pieces, told me that our filings will be so comprehensive, the Board of Health will have plenty of information to make it determined. Now, that's coming from him, the applicant, who's ran the app, but it's done many of these filings, so maybe John has a different opinion, but that, that's why I was told.
Doesn't it make sense that if they feel that the studies are unreasonable, delay, cost, go to bring it back to you guys? I think, does that kind of, kind of say, okay, you don't have to file appeals, worry about appeal periods running and everything else? I mean, I'm just trying to find a happy medium here.
Yeah, I, I think, but there's two points. One is, who can make the initial request? Is it the Board of Health or is it us? Because if it's the Board of Health...
It can't be us, we don't know enough about this.
But it can't, we are charged to act as the Board of Health, which is up to all local bylaws.
Yeah, and seek their, and seek information, comment, and...
Right, but maybe that condition has to be that if the Board of Health requests, that the zoning board requests additional studies.
I think that's, I think we have to go that Zercoo's route.
I, I mean, I don't see another way.
Well, we have council here who made that...
Just one, one good thing, and you may still feel that a waiver would tie to the Board of Health's heads, but again, you're talking about Title V and all of that, this is, that's what's at issue. It's not, as I said before, let me rephrase it, this waiver request is only under the local bylaw.
Correct.
And so you're not tying their hands if they say they can ask for something under Title V, and if we disagree and we're proven wrong, so be it, we're stuck.
Right.
We're only saying something that would be under the local bylaw, which does relate, and I acknowledge that does relate to the subsequent list of waivers that are specific to sections of the local Board of Health.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think you can grab the condition that grants us the spirit of what we want, but I'm not sure if we'll solve it this second, maybe later tonight, midnight, when we finish going through all the sections.
Won't be midnight.
Let me ask, before I lose counsel's focus on this one, under what provision of Title V can the local Board of Health request additional information or studies for, for Title V issues?
I defer to the end here.
I don't, I never, I don't know, but I've never seen it before. I don't, I don't, I don't have a definitive answer.
Okay, but, but that is in fact the very definitive question that was just posed by council, which was, why do we need this? Because we have this right for Title V. And that's why I asked, where is the right? So that was the specific question that was just posed. And if we don't know where it is, then I'm not inclined to do this waiver.
I don't think that was what he said, Mr. Chairman, I mean...
Well, then I'll, we can ask him what he just said. I believe what he just said is that the Board of Health has the right on Title V issues, but not on local, not on local.
I believe it was your Board of Health member who, who I think inherently said it, and I'm not going to disagree specifically, I certainly respect him as a Board of Health member. If I, I do not mean to say, I don't think I said it, I certainly do not mean to say that, what I said is if, and I was, is what this gentleman said, if the Board of Health has the power under Title V, then we either have to agree or convince them otherwise, or pursue whatever appeal rule they're in, that's all.
Okay, yes.
I think it should be tabled, for now, because, I think Kirk Schultz also says he believes there are some other waivers that he's going to request, subject, you know, until the Board of Health kind of catches up with us, whatever, the next week or two, that may tie into the need for the study. So we're talking about it in a vacuum.
Right.
They may have specific other waivers they do not want you to grant that they...
Which would necessitate these studies, got it.
So I think we're kind of talking about it in a way.
Okay, so, so this is on hold. And then the next waiver request is Roman four, number 12, gives Board of Health the authority to levy additional fees inconsistent with Chapter 40B regs. I think that's correct, I think it is inconsistent. Susan, do you agree?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. It would be that to not waive it, the...
Yes, so we, I think this waiver is appropriate.
To pay consultant fees?
No, the, Roman four, number 12?
Yeah, it says consultant needs to witness or test or review the additional studies.
I'm going to...
Yeah, this is that, for them, additional consultant fees if necessary to review everything.
Okay, so this is, again, if we need these additional studies?
Uh, yeah, that's what it says. To witness, test, or review additional studies.
Right.
The Board may require additional amount, I, what is, and, and, I'm sorry, I don't know, this off the top of my head, is there a, an amount set under Title V for consultant fees? How do you do it?
Most septic systems, the Board of Health are very straightforward, so there would be very little to review, it's got septic tank, and each, this one has wastewater treatment system, and it's more complicated, pressure dosing, so the Board, in any event, they sometimes would give that to a consultant, an engineer, like a pump company, like a treatment plant, and they would have a peer review or do that.
Maybe, maybe it could be way conditional to the applicant agreeing to a peer review, you know, being, not really assumption, it would probably be Mr. Chassia reviewing the file and to help the Board of Health with the technical, but just the term, additional fees, it's a little more of this, you know, I don't think we have a objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It seems as though if the zoning board appeals, is going to take on some of the local regulations...
Yes.
On behalf of the Board of Health in this process.
Yes.
That you would also take on the fees which are typically associated with these particular regulations that pay for things, or relative to what you've just heard about, some appropriate studies or, or waiver fees, that it would be, again, if you're taking on that responsibility, the fee structure is part of it.
And the state statute forces us to take on that responsibility.
I don't speak for the state, that's a suspicion.
Right. And, I mean, it, it's not as if this provision is unlimited, you're talking about initial deposit, not to exceed $5,000, so it's not saying, you know, it can be whatever.
It would be what the Board of Health would customize.
So I think, though, this is similar to the question we were just looking at, since we need to know about the, which items of the local bylaw may or may not be waived.
Well, if, I mean, even under Title V, let's say...
Everything's waived from the just...
They're doing 100%. It sounds from what John's saying, that even just from a Title V analysis, this isn't your plain vanilla system.
Right.
The individual Board members, although, have been, even though they've been on board for many years, may not have the technical expertise to review a system of this type. So even assuming that, is, you know, that's why I asked the Title V question. Can they engage a review consultant and collect fees from the applicant, even if...
It's just Title V.
Even if it was just Title V, that's the question.
We're, we're comfortable with that, we understand, in fact, the system is not a sell-out, every day, so based on Mr. Chassia or another civil engineer, our guidance to the Board of Health, we're fine. From the best of my knowledge, well, the Board of Health does not have many civil engineers on the Board, so it would be happy to buy.
So, yes. We do have a consultant, a civil engineer in the Board. And to answer Susan's question, that's correct, we're able to assess fees relative to Title V.
Okay.
So we're just adding additional fees on up at Title V, which is your purview anyways, back to the question.
Right, so if we're talking about fees that are limited to the local bylaw questions, then we need to get to what those local bylaw questions are, so we can have this discussion in the context of that. So let's move forward on that. So number 12 is on hold. Now we're up to Roman six, number three, which is item 13 on your list, which is requires components to be no more than 200 feet from the house. The applicant says it will comply with Title V. With Title V, denial of this waiver would result in the loss of two units, most specifically units one and two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the last time I was here, I notified the Board that the Board of Health has waived this particular requirement in the past.
So you don't have an issue with waiving this?
We've done that before. I feel that's something that we are willing to waive.
Yes, okay, so I'm comfortable for that, so.
Thank you.
That's item 13. We're now up to item 14, which is Roman six, number five, does not allow a septic system within 100 feet of the wetlands. The applicant will comply with Title V, denial of this waiver would result a loss of seven units, most specifically units number 10 through 16. Yes, sir?
I don't speak for my Board of Health, because we haven't met to discuss this, but Mr. Catt and I have.
Yes.
But you did go, actually, the Board of Health reviewed this issue relative to the former 18 temporary development, but it's the same issue, more or less. The Board did not recommend that the zoning board grant the waiver, the proposed system is close proximity to wetlands or contributory to the sources, such as the drinking water supply. And then they said that the Board of Health may consider granting a variance from this requirement if the applicant is able to demonstrate that the circumstances of the site or proposed system would limit impacts on the adjacent wetlands, such as demonstrating that the groundwater flows away from the wetlands attributable.
Thank you for reading that, that's exactly what I was going to point out. One of the things I hear, heard, we talked about earlier, were some studies.
Yep.
And test wells were mentioned. And so this would be the waiver request would have that condition...
Yep.
Associated with it. And I think it behooves us, the Board of Health, to educate the Board...
Yes.
What type of additional study or, or condition would be appropriate for the waiver of this particular important segment?
Just for I'm clear, does that condition say that the, the water can't flow toward the wetland?
No.
It's not.
So if you could, but that's the way it's graded. That's the way the plans show the grading.
That's where it's going.
To the wetland, so I don't, I'm just...
It would be subsurface, but I think that's where it's going to go anyway. Title V is 50-foot setback?
So, I just want to make sure I understand what, what, what it means there, because I don't under, I'm not saying I understand any of this stuff, but it seemed to me that the whole idea of the, what we talked about with the disturbance and the, within the 1,500-foot setback from the wetland would be to grade the property down at an engineered grade, so that the, the, um, surface water, you know, would, would flow into the wetland. But I don't, Emily, you read something out in front of me.
But this would be the groundwater, this would be the surface.
Right, so...
And the wetlands just where the groundwater is above the surface.
Roman six, five, Board of Health does not recommend that the zoning board grant this waiver, the proposed system is in close proximity to wetlands, which are tributary to sources of the town's drinking water. The Board of Health may consider grading their variance from this, if the applicant is able to demonstrate that the circumstances of the site or proposed system would limit impacts on the adjacent wetlands, such as demonstrating that the groundwater flows away from the wetlands and tributary. And we're saying this, in fact, the wet, the...
Well, the surface water is definitely going to flow toward it, the groundwater, I, I don't know, is that right? Yeah, so the surface water is designed, right, is designed to go down toward the wetland, the ground, but this is a condition, as Joe Freeman pointed out.
The Board of Health is going to argue the point that the groundwater travels towards the well field over at Willow Mill. And if this particular variance is an opportunity for us to do diligence and to protect the town as best we can by including additional testing and those type of activities that the Board will feel are appropriate relative to the groundwater information you're going to be receiving in our conference alone.
So, is another...
Can I make a point on that?
Sure.
The protection of the well field, which is 3,200 feet away from us, how many other houses and structures and septic systems are between us and 3,200 feet? Probably hundreds. So why that condition would, would relate to us, which we're 3,200 feet away from the well field, it's a bit blocked, so it's...
I'm wondering to what extent this issue that the Board of Health is raising can be transformed into a performance standard, that they would be looking for certain things from this project, either to make sure it happens or to make sure that it doesn't happen. And if you can demonstrate, if it doesn't happen, if you can demonstrate it, then you're not going to need the test, if you can't, then we're going to have to have the test.
We're not comfortable with that, because we're going to demonstrate what we need to under Title V. They can take an arbitrary performance test, that it's impossible to me...
Let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question.
You're given to be under the local bylaws by doing this, as opposed to you taking that responsibility. That's not a fine matter.
Right.
Right, what there is...
Does anybody know if we're in the zone two of those well fields that's up there?
Yes, that's, that's why we're talking about, because we're in the zone two.
We are in the zone two.
Required a certain density...
Want to be clear.
Under Title V, required a certain minimum density, that's why we keep talking about number bed, bed, local bylaw are, but let us to 40...
Three, 43.
Three, three, the site, we're on 54, not 48.
48, right, right.
And so that's really the issue, it's, it's the pollution factor of the amount of that we're putting into the ground, and that's a weakness, we feel, under the standards. Because we are zone two, we are required to have secondary treatment.
Right.
Therefore, our quality will be 90% clean, and anything that will have... ...therefore, our quality would be 90% cleaner than any other bylaws, or others. It also has treatment, what, a treatment-
Yep.
...to it. It also has a requirement for maintenance, a requirement for testing, and so it is a good system.
So is it just the fact that there's an additional five bedrooms beyond what would be allowed under the bylaw, that we're talking about this specific requirement?
Well, that is an end of the setback requirement.
Right.
But, I mean, how does setback from the wetland-
But 550 gallons a day, we're talking.
Groundwater below, which is 100 feet away, I think it's gonna be difficult to argue.
So, can we, Joe, can I just kind of bring us back?
Yes, yep.
We're talking about the difference between a 50-foot setback that Title V requires-
Yes.
And a 100-foot setback. So, kind of the, I don't know, I know there's a lot of conversations, a lot of discussions, but I didn't hear, what does the 50 feet gain us?
The additional 50 feet.
Right, what does, I mean, isn't that the question, what does the 50 feet gain us, isn't that-
Yes.
But I don't know that that's the question that's been answered.
Well, I thought where the Board of Health was going is, they want some testing to be able to figure out if there is additional damage to the local environment because of the loss of that 50 feet.
Why keeps standing for one?
No, 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 absolutely.
We're, if I may-
Yes, please.
We're gonna argue in just a minute about 12 bylaws-
Right.
...from how this is prepared. And we feel strongly that you should hold the applicant to that standard, make no conditions, zero. At the same time, we feel with that particular safeguard, there is still a great concern because of the close proximity of this project-
Right.
-to the, not just Zone 2, but a local sub-basin in which the full-milled wellfield is a component of, and because of that concern, we're looking for testing. And the only way we can test it is if you have another local regulation, or that we have, in which you will authorize, allow a condition. So, to Susan's point, what is the difference between the 100 and the 50, the 50-foot, we would argue that the, it's a big difference, but we are willing to educate or educate the insider-
Right.
-as to conditions, in which if we have had to test it, determine if this case is a significant concern, as we believe it is, that still means we can hang on to that particular zone, that particular regulation, which you do not throw out.
Do you know, do you know what the scope and cost of the testing would be? I think, I think it's really important that you know that, and tell us.
We've done that to the agency, restaurant, which is the closest to the pond-
Yep.
...and we get that information to you, but it's not, it's not a significant amount which is a deal breaker for the problem.
All right, well, I guess we are kind of charged with that analysis, or that evaluation, in my opinion, I don't speak for- Right, so-
I mean, I'm confused, I don't even know where to begin, so they're asking us to do a study that would verify the Board of Health position that that 50-foot offer is critical, whereas isn't it our requirement to book a study that would have been essentially completed by the time we leave our bylaw clear?
Mr. Chairman, we're not, I was a study that I heard- Not pertinent to our project, but there's lots of other things in the wetland area and whatnot, why isn't this town undertaken? And just for a point, we submitted a letter last month, or end of March, we've heard lots of things about preservation, pristine element of the local water, and we respect that, and we ask the Board of Health to furnish these studies and analyses, and our civil engineer researchers, when they're armed.
And the balancing act of 40 feet is, it has to be a serious threat to health and safety, it's documented, not that it might be, or something might fail a third year, or something like this, there has to be some documentation with this balancing act-
Right.
...which we haven't heard, maybe it's there, but we haven't had any evidence of that, and they want us to study it for them, because, as Jeff said, there's hundreds of houses between 3,200 feet and we are, and here's the opportunity, and they must do all this work to prove that, which is their burden, that it's overriding the need for 40 miles, 140 feet.
Ma'am, yeah, I'm just trying to understand what it is that this board is being asked to directly or indirectly have studied, and what the cost is, so that we understand what the request is, what, that we can assess the relevance of the request, the cost of the request, and we can help hopefully-
Let's see what happens next time we do that.
Joe, can I just float something here? Given-
Yes, it's, and I've been living at this for three hours, not so much longer.
We have, it was from January 28th-
Yeah.
-this list, I think the plans have not changed substantially, if you kind of flip ahead, you'll see that, you know, in connection with that 18 unit, the overwhelming majority of the, of the recommendations of the Board of Health was not to grant waivers. They are meeting, when?
I believe we meet in June.
22nd, I heard.
So, I guess, you know, if, if they're hoping that they can meet, and then resubmit more information to you, which could, and you were willing to accept it at that time, would result in a re-review even, in part, of all of these questions, does it make sense to just skip ahead to the last couple waivers, come up with a, you know, kind of, you know, we know where we are in all the other types of waivers, and-
Basically, to hold off on the Board of Health issues.
Yeah, because I'm just, I'm just seeing as, if you're gonna be willing to accept and consider what there you may submit in two weeks, there's gonna be a lot of rethinking of what, everything we've been talking about for the last half an hour plus. So, I'm just trying to, from a process standpoint-
I'll second that.
I, I'm just throwing it out there as to efficiency of board's time, and staff's time, and applicant's time.
Right, what's your reaction?
If we left off with that in January, to get them to do that, to give you the proof you would ask them for, and that was, this is May, we asked for it in January, we had the old eight to move it plan, nothing's come forward except our engineers giving a lot of the statements they made, you have that in record, and so we're back where we were all those months ago, we appreciate that they still could give you something, but it hasn't happened yet.
I mean, Emily, it was very helpful, I felt, up there, and Emily, we've given a reference, and so you've, Board of Health, and you've let it, it's submitted, you've referenced this, and this, and this, can you please furnish those for us? Nothing has ever come to us from the Board of Health, or from the zoning board, because frankly, I don't think it exists, so, there's lots of statements and things that have been said by the Board of Health, and, and studies and analyses and whatnot, and stuff of our knowledge, there isn't any, to think the study, I talked to our civil engineer about this, the studies that are required by, say, the Housing Appeals Committee to demonstrate the local bylaw takes precedent over the state, not a study that's done in a week or two, or $5,000, these are major studies done by, you know, environmental engineering companies, 8,000, 200,000 dollar studies, they take a long time to do, so I would be very surprised if in the next two weeks, there's a revelation of all this material that's gonna come out, that's gonna justify the need to have a stronger local bylaw, because it's counsel, your own counsel has told you, if the board doesn't grant the waivers, and there's an appeal, and the proof is on municipality to demonstrate that those local bylaws aren't in fact required, and they can't demonstrate that after the fact either, so-
Well, even the fact that they're questioning the 10,000 gallons on the calibration benefit, we're fundamentally annoyed with the way they're approaching, so we can wait on all of it, we just don't have any hope.
Yeah, I mean-
It brings the waivers that the Board of Health, we have to-
Right, I mean, just, just in fairness with respect to the procedure, all the action stopped when you submitted new plans, because this was, this was, you know, your, your big building was fundamentally different.
What they were supposed to be given.
Well, but, everything stopped, and we're not gonna have them spend funds on, on a project that was pulled, and now you've resubmitted it, and saying, why, why didn't you work all along, so, I think, right, so I think there's equity on both sides. I, I think Susan's suggestion is a good one, I think it, we know we're gonna have to back, and quite frankly, I'm not entirely interested in taking up your time, if it turns out there's gonna be, you know, something from, from the Board of Health.
I mean, we have a couple more later that are beyond the Board of Health lines, right, that are left at the end here, one of them, I think, you said you didn't want a little nitrate, which is change rate, the other one's a moratorium, I'll take that as.
I, yeah.
Well, look, before you do that, when the Board-
With the Board of Health?
Board of Health, can they take this that was submitted, January 28th, addendum, and maybe update this, or annotate this, so that we're just looking at apples and apples for the board, do you know what I'm saying? So there's a, something that was submitted, that went through-
So, Susan, I understand, I think you can have that discussion privately with-
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Just for the interest of the applicants, there are a number of waivers that we, that we would agree with them, that you remove from the list, if you'd like, and go through those, one additional, and then from outside, outright.
I, I think, I would be more comfortable just dealing with all the Board of Health issues the next time, and we should be able to put it to bed. I appreciate the offer for that, but let's just-
Our help.
No, okay, and I would actually recommend that we stop the waivers now, it is late, people's concentration is, including my own, maybe, starting to be less than 100%. Let's talk about schedules, so that we're not conflicting, because I know Memorial Day's coming, and people've got their own schedules, so let's make sure that we can do what accommodates the applicant, as well as consultants, and the board, where is my panel in here? There it is.
The final thing is, is what's available, about any of these, that first, about any of these.
What Joe, June 4th is, I, I can't, I can't know for sure, I mean, there, it's a, there's a positability that I may not be able to get here, and so, to get to the point where we're practically at the end, where you're discussing the conditions, you know, and you guys are more than capable, obviously, to do without me, but I, if you want me to be here-
Yes.
-I can promise that I can maybe get a report, so that's-
Like, a day before, the day after, can you do?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the board that's come up-
I cannot do the 3rd.
You can't do the 3rd, can you do the 5th, which is Thursday?
Joe, I'm tired.
Oh, look, um, and I, can you guys do it? I may have a conflict on that, I've got a project that's going, going in Connecticut, I know I'm there Tuesday night, I may have to be there Thursday night that, that week.
Okay.
And I just don't know yet, I won't know for a couple weeks, unfortunately.
June 4th was a Wednesday-
Yes.
And we were gonna start that at 7:30, because I know I have a board, I have a board meeting that, that day, Thursday, the 5th, I'm fine with, and-
I can do the 4th, but I can't do the 3rd, and I probably can't do the 5th.
So if Joe can't do the 5th, that's not gonna work.
Okay.
I assume no one wants to do Friday.
No. There's Monday the-
Do you even have that?
Do you have Monday the 2nd?
There's Monday the 2nd.
Monday the 2nd, or Monday the 9th?
I could do either.
Can you guys, can you do the 2nd?
I can do the 2nd, yeah.
Okay. I can do the 2nd.
I'm, I'm good with the 2nd as well.
7:30.
Are you ready to?
No, no, this is rather now than later than-
Is this a today shift, or something?
Apparently it's a holiday, but only in New Zealand.
Only in New Zealand.
Okay, so, I assume we have nothing else scheduled on the 2nd, are we doing 7 or 7:30?
7:30.
7:30.
Okay, 7:30, June 2nd, and then I think we should nail down a final meeting, because you still need to have the time.
Do you wanna do it now?
Let's at least tentatively get it, so that people can have it on the calendar, if we need to shift it, we'll shift it.
Up September?
I can't do that, I've been on it before, so I, I think we're talking about, like, two weeks from then, that, that's the week of the 16th.
Of the 8th.
Do you have any preference for those days?
Do you have a meeting on the 18th?
We do? Oh, yeah, we do.
You're regularly doing it. You have one item on it, or potentially on it.
It's like all of them to me.
Regular, regular meeting.
So, um-
I don't know if you wanna add-
I can't, I can't do the 3rd, I can't do the Thursday that week, so let's, let's-
I mean, that's gonna be going through, I mean, at that point, it should really be-
Yeah.
-reading conditions, do you wanna do it the same night?
I think we should do that, so that'd be-
It should be 18.
It started at 7, and it's the variance rate at 7.
Well, do we have the other one noticed for 7?
We don't have it noticed for any time yet, because if it's-
I'd rather get the other one done first, yeah.
So if we do that one at 7?
Right, so we do this at 7:30, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so we're talking about June 2nd at 7:30, June 18th at 7:30, and so when does that push our time for issuing decisions?
Would be July 28th, if I, if my math is right.
Todd's gonna do it for us.
No, I can do it. It's easy, there's 30 days in June, so.
I think it's okay to just have the, the gentleman to close the hearing, and then we know it's 40 days.
So here we go, so from June 18th.
So you're saying it's the 28th, Joe?
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah, if it's 40 days, if 30 would be, the 18th.
It is July 18th, that's correct.
Is Monday, is seeing the draft version of the conditions?
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
That's the next, that's the next question that I have for you, Joe, is, so, as I said, there's a very, very rough mock-up of drawing together conditions from different places. The board hasn't been able to at all, I was kind of seeking them first, they were wrong last night. Does it, I don't know if the board's comfortable with, Emily circulated something that has a big disclaimer-
Yeah.
-that this was assembled by staff, based on prior determined conditions, and on specific to this, and it happens to be by the board, and-
Yeah.
-the board deserves rights to, and so that's modified, and that went out to you guys, and then at the same time, before the next meeting, would you be comfortable with that, or would you rather, they all came to the, came to the meeting, you know what I mean, how do you want to work that?
Before the June 2nd meeting?
Yeah.
So it's not gonna incorporate-
So that they can come on June, if anything jumped out at them, that they said, this is gonna be uneconomic, this is gonna be unworkable, we can't do this, at least it's coming out on June 2nd and not on June 18th.
Are they inherited, or they wouldn't relate to our plan?
No, they would, they would.
No, 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 they wouldn't.
Would be cobbled from all the places.
No, 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 no.
Not hard for the writer, for it's just kind of standard, and then some are the comments that came from John, or Jeff Durk, or-
Yeah, I think that's helpful, I, I, same time, I just don't-
They disclaimer.
Right, because I don't want them to say, well, it wasn't on the, we're circulating, so we can't, right, right, but I, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
You have any problem with that?
No.
Okay, okay, so that means, we're adjourned until June 2nd, 7:30, with a tentative next hearing after that, and June 18th at 7:30, assuming we keep that 18th at 7:30, 40 days from then is July 28th, which would be the ultimate deadline for submitting the decision.
Thank you.
With the applicant's consent, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your patience.